Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Sparta Township Planning Board. I'd like to call this meeting to order. For the record, this meeting is being held on December 20, 2023 at approximately 7:06 PM at the Sparta Township Municipal Building located at 65 Main Street, Sparta, New Jersey. And the livestream can be viewed on YouTube at www.youtube.com/spartatwp. Please note that adequate public notice of this meeting was given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Let's begin with a salute to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Dory, would you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Dean Blumetti.
Here.
Jeanette Burke.
Here.
Vice Chairman Ron Day. Christine Dunbar.
Here.
Bill Enright.
Here.
Justin Canelis.
Here.
Angela Cassie.
Here.
Chairwoman Celeste Luciano.
Here.
Ernest Rixstad.
Here.
Mike Sylvester.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we have another packed schedule this evening consisting of everything from approval to minutes to the two hearings. I have a few minor notes before we go forward. First, in the interest of time, testimony won't be heard beyond 10:00 PM. If someone's in the middle of their testimony at that time, they will be the last person heard, and the remainder of the hearing will be continued so that the remainder of testimony and public comment can occur. I realize that this hasn't been common practice this year. However, in my opinion, trying to finish an application at midnight or later does a disservice to the applicant and is unfair to the public, all of whom deserve our best judgment. This will be common practice moving into 2024. I'd also like to mention that our next scheduled meeting is January 17th, and it will be our reorganization meeting. And finally, actually, I'm sorry, before I move into that, as Vice Chair Ron Day is not with us this evening, there's one item on the agenda that we will not be moving forward with, and unfortunately, it is the parking ordinance that's going to have to get tabled until our January session. Finally, before we begin with the agenda, as this is our last meeting of the year, I'd like to take a moment to thank everyone on and affiliated with this board. It's been a trying year, but ultimately, I believe a good one. I appreciate everything that's been done with us and for us, and am grateful for you and everything you do for our town. I've said as much, and now I'm saying, I've said as much to you individually, and now I'm saying it publicly. I'm looking forward to what we can accomplish next year. So that said, we have the approval of meeting minutes from October 19, 2022, and approval of site plan waiver minutes from July 27 through the remainder of the year. So let's start with the October 19, 2022 minutes, which need to be approved by Ernest Rixstad and Mike Sylvester. Oh, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Mr. Sylvester.
Yes.
And Mr. Rixstad.
Yes.
Okay, that's passed. Now, normally, it would run, it would fall to Vice Chair Day to run through the minutes for the Minor Site Plan Subcommittee. As I'm not on the Subcommittee, I'm going to rely on another member of the Subcommittee to walk through those minutes if possible. Please.
Well, you don't really need to go summary.
No, but to kind of make sure that everything, because I don't have a way of knowing whether or not everything's complete.
Sure, I'll do that. Thank you. So this is a site plan waiver Subcommittee report following the whole year, but tonight we are approving the, essentially, the second half of the year, July 27 to December 31. Just in summary, the Site Plan Waiver Subcommittee reviewed, I believe it was 58 applications that we adjudicated. In many cases, after thorough review, we granted the waiver and the request, whether it be for new tenants, new signs, et cetera. In some cases, based on law, we needed to refer it to the full planning board. In other cases, the applicant decided not to proceed, so, but we adjudicated 58 of them. I believe this report only is 53. I think there might be a page missing.
Fifty-eight.
There you go, 58. So that's, I just want to thank and congratulate the Site Plan Waiver Subcommittee. That's a lot of work, a lot of in-person meetings, a lot of emails, a lot of phone conversations, a lot of virtual meetings to help those 58 applicants. So with that, I'd make a motion to approve these minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the Minor Site Plan Committee for July through the end of the year.
Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Are we down for a vote?
Can we do it all in favor?
Yeah, technically, we're just incorporating them into your board's minutes, so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving forward, we have some items of correspondence to address. 103123 from Kenneth and Kathleen Potts, 514 West Shore Trail, Block 4001, Lot 81. This is a legal notification that an application for a flood hazard area individual permit is being submitted to the NJDEP to reconstruct an existing bulkhead along the lakefront of their property. This is informational, as far as I'm aware, and no action needs to be taken. Moving on to the next piece of correspondence, which was dated 11/123. It is the end-of-year report from Dave Simmons PE. Does anyone have any questions or discussion regarding this? You have a report from the dais? Okay, so I think that that's good, because there's no additional action needed to be taken. Next, we have the 121523 Planning and Zoning Annual Report. Any questions or comment regarding this from the dais?
Just a minor request that we can update the title just to reflect Planning Board and Zoning Board. I think right now it just says Planning Board.
Okay.
It is only the Planning Board. It does not include the zoning board.
Okay, so that was an agenda issue.
Yeah, that.
Okay.
The zoning board will do a separate, separate report.
Okay, so we're approving just, or actually, we're accepting just the planning annual report, Planning Board's annual report.
So I have one modification. Down near the bottom has Site Plan Waiver Subcommittee. It says, "Commercial Site Plan Waivers Granted 58." I would say that that's not necessarily 58 waivers granted 58.
Reviewed.
Fifty-eight reviewed.
Dory can change that to reviewed.
I can make that change.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments, questions regarding this report? Okay, so we will move on with the Town Council update. Councilman Blumetti, if you wouldn't mind?
Sure, just have two updates for this evening. First of all, and this goes back also to last meeting where we kind of ran out of time. First is, I just wanted to announce that the top of the Sparta Glen Park, the mountaintop there where the hiking trail, trailhead is, there was a new second access point that was built and added there to provide another place for people to get in, and also for safety reasons. Please to announce that it was actually named and dedicated two meetings ago called Yonkers Landing in honor of Jerry Yonkers, who retired recently, multiple decades-long, valuable, really valuable employee. It also was his idea, so it was dedicated after him. If you go there, you'll see a plaque. And just secondly, ordinance 2322 passed, three to one. I was actually the vote against it. This ordinance is to explore the sale of a portion of township-owned property that is adjacent to the Perona Farms Barn Banquet Building and Facility. Currently, there's an easement there, so this ordinance was to proceed with the potential sale to the Perona Farms Realty Corp. If and when the contract terms are agreed to, it would come back to the council as a resolution to be passed. Some of the concerns and conversations were around an existing conservation restriction that's in the deed today, and whether or not that would follow if it was sold. There's wetlands on the property, there's a wellhead protection area, and also just the concept of selling a piece of township property to a private entity, whether or not it was reasonable and justified. So that was some of the discussion. So you'll probably see that again when it comes towards resolution, if there's a contract that comes to fruition. Thank you.
Great. Ms. Dunbar, if you wouldn't mind?
Yes, for the Environmental Commission, this was from our November 23 meeting. And congratulations were given to Dean Blumetti for receiving the Angic Leadership Award this past October. We also received a congratulatory letter for our good work in Sparta, specifically to increase the number of EC Commissioners from five to seven, and invite participation of a student liaison. And we welcomed our new member, Basia Kolzalka, who is joining us. We're encouraging Sparta businesses to engage in our green business initiative. We would like to invite all businesses to take simple steps to become more sustainable, and this is part of our Sustainable New Jersey Action. We're edging towards silver from bronze. And Lou, this year of holding an Earth Day like we did last year, hold the nice fair out front here. We're scheduling a Sparta Glen Arbor Day event for Friday, April 26, 2024, and outreach to schools and towns is being prepared. We unanimously approved a resolution to oppose the expansion of the New Jersey I-95 Turnpike, mainly on the basis of cost pollution and unfriendly to our air climate, and in particular, a harmful impact to the local environmental justice communities. Unfortunately, this did not pass our Town Council. Thankfully, the New Jersey Highlands Council has awarded Sparta, this is the big news, the $14,500 grant monies, which will go towards a major update for an open space plan. The highly experienced applicant for doing this update is the New Jersey Land Conservancy, who presented to the EC during a session that we were all invited to. Thank you to our interim town manager and others who applied for our grant. And new business was a New Jersey Bottle Return Bill that we're looking at. In terms of our last meeting on the 14th, all of our discussion mainly centered around our projects towards sustainable New Jersey actions.
Great, fabulous. Okay, since Vice Chair Day is not with us this evening, we do hope he feels better soon. There will not be any updates for certain subcommittees, and seeing as though we already went through site plan waiver, I think that's pretty well covered. So next on our agenda is the remainder of the hearing for PB Number 710, Sparta Veterinary Associates and Urgent Care, 365 Houses Corner Road, Block 17001, Lot 1, Site Plan with Variance.
Madam Chairman, I recuse on this matter.
Yes. We'll see you shortly, Tom. Dory, these renderings, if you wouldn't mind, if there are any extra when they get to the end, if you wouldn't mind putting them on the ledge for anybody else who might want to see them.
Sure.
Thank you.
Oh, there's a ledge.
Yeah, there's a front, there's a front and a back.
Front and a back.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Back has a trellis on it.
Yeah. Did everybody get this one? Okay, there you go. I didn't get this one. I passed him before taking one. I just need one.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, members of the board. My name is Robert McBreyer. I'm an attorney at law from a Skink Price Smith &amp; King. The board is where we represent the applicant, Dr. Travis.
If you wouldn't mind using the microphone, there are individuals who won't be capable of hearing you in the back of the room.
My name is Robert McBreyer. I'm with the law from a Skink Price Smith &amp; King. We represent the applicant, Dr. Travis Surf. We appeared at the board's December 6, 2023 meeting, and presented testimony from the applicant, as well as from the applicant's professionals, Jason Dunn, professional planner, and Paul Ashworth, architect, in support of the application. Mr. Ashworth is here. Following the meeting, Madam Chair, we reviewed the comments that were seen that evening. Mr. Ashworth had an opportunity to make some modifications to the renderings. And at this time, I'd like to have Mr. Ashworth describe those modifications for the board. And Mr. Brady, he was sworn in and previously qualified.
Mr. Ashworth, you understand you're still under oath?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Mr. Ashworth, can you please, and you know what, let's mark these as exhibits.
We'll do it, A201 with today's date, and A202. A201. And then A202 with the date. If you start with A201, give us some basic information of what that is, and then tell us about A202, and then you can do your testimony.
And also, if you wouldn't mind, explain the difference between the rendering that you had originally and what you've put together, because there's a lot of the public here that wasn't
Absolutely.
available for the last meeting.
So, to follow your request, A201 is the rendering from the front, from Houses Corner Road. It's the same view and the same rendering with the modifications that we'll speak about. The new one is the second, which is O2, and it is the view if you were on Route 15 coming north. We all had concerns, hey, you just got a flat elevation. I never did an actual rendering in three dimensions, and that's what you see there. So the difference is, what we did was we were trying to address the softness comment, to make this a little bit of a more Sussex County-type building. So what we've done, and it's going to be a combination of the two, is we went from flat roofs to curves on the main entry, and what we're calling the logo entry, and we added a lot more wood elements to it. So, and I can't remember who it was on this side, we were talking about doing the sunscreens like over at Industry. We did something very similar to that, but they're more horizontal, and they're all wood toned. And you can see them over every single window. They let water right through, but they're fins, so they stop the sun. Exaggerated some of the wood elements, such as the columns. And then the view that you see from the rear, you can truly see where it's not kind of plain Jane. We've also jacked up and made the window trim heavier to, it's almost a little bit more of a residential style there. I think it fits in a little bit better, and once again, added the wood elements. And the area which had kind of a seating area out there, we just put a simple wood pergola over it. Those are primarily the changes.
Okay, any questions for this witness from the dais? No, guess?
What color, how would you describe the colors, particularly the bluish gray?
Exactly what it is. It's the cooler grays. They're not the warm grays, so it's closer to a battleship, but it's definitely got a bluer gray hue to it. The stone is a natural stone that I actually picked that's mined out of Wykoff is actually where it came from. It's called Elf Gray, and it's just a staggered gray. It's got a little bit of brown tone to it. The panel is a very light off-white panel. And I said the materials before, this is going to be like a hardy plank. It's a painted, you know, cementitious fiber material. And that's, those are really materials.
I have another question. I see the rear view, the second floor, next to the pergola canopy, the windows to the right, there are three windows. They look, are they industrial? Are they closed? Do you look like they're not?
They're vents for the HVAC room.
I see.
Fresh air supply return. That's how we hide everything.
Excuse me, I have a question. How would you describe the stone?
The stone is a medium-sized stone, so in reality, the stones are probably between 12 to 18 inches, and it's what they call a rough horizontal stacks. They do align, but they're only six to eight inches, and you'll get this kind of stagger up and down. It's not that very fine ledge that you see, nor is it large scale. It doesn't fit within anything here, so we picked a medium-scale stone. It's natural, too.
What stone is it?
It's granite. It's a granite.
It's a granite stone. Okay, I thought it might be marble.
No, 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 granite schist.
Any thought why you didn't carry the wood feature all the way through to those other three windows that were just mentioned?
Because they're louvers, and I didn't want to obscure airflow. They're calculated square inch, and I didn't want to mess with it.
Any other questions from the dais? Was, I don't remember. I'm not recalling correctly. Was this the last bit of testimony that we had? Who else did we have to testify?
It was, so unless there are any further questions, we've presented all the experts, witnesses that we intend to.
So what I'm going to do at this point, if there are no more questions from the dais, is open it to the floor. I'm assuming that your engineer will be available for any questions from the public, and everyone needs to remember that they're under oath.
Madam Chairwoman, can I ask, are we going to have someone walk us through the stormwater management and flow?
Oh, well, that's why I was.
Yeah, yeah. I don't think that's been addressed.
Mr. Brady, Owen Dykstra has testified before as an expert in the field of engineering. Would the board accept his qualifications, or does he need to?
There's no need for him to qualify. I think we're well aware. He does have to swear in.
Morning. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And state your name, spell your last name, provide an address, please.
Owen Dykstra, D-Y-K-S-T-R-A, 11 Lawrence Road, Newton, New Jersey.
And just so it's clear on the record, the colloquy we had before was that Mr. Dykstra has appeared here before as a professional engineer, and we're accepting him as an expert and such without having to go through his qualifications, because the board knows.
Mr. Brady, Mr. Brady, can I ask you a question? So just procedurally, is there anything extra we have to do or be aware of or discuss, being that Mr. Dykstra is testifying, and he's also the owner or part of the application process?
No, there's nothing that you have to do. I suppose the fact that he's an owner, the board can keep that in mind when he testifies, both as, he's an expert, but he's also an owner. But other than that, there's no further questions or baseline we have to establish.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the question was how the stormwater works on site? Effectively, the stormwater flows primarily towards Houses Corner Road. What we've done is we've designed the facility to have a collection system, which is catch basins and pipes, which brings it to the infiltration basin that's constructed on the northeasterly corner of the property. And all of the water is captured there. That meets our water quality, water quantity, and groundwater discharge requirements and infiltration recharge requirements.
Did we mark that as an exhibit last time?
We did.
We did, okay. I don't recall.
I think that was A10.
It's A101.
A101, okay.
A101.
Yes.
Mr. Dykstra, can you walk us through, how does that compare to the current situation, current conditions today of the undeveloped lot?
Under the stormwater standards that we have to design these projects, we're required to redesign so the project will infiltrate at least much water annually for groundwater recharge, which we meet that requirement. Also, we're required to reduce the peak discharge leaving the site by 50% for the two-year storm, 25% for the 10-year, and 20% for the 100, and we meet that requirement as well. And then groundwater quality, an infiltration pond meets the 80% reduction in, for water quality purposes.
And can you describe, please, how does it flow today? Just from an aerial view of looking at this diagram, today, without that there, how does it, the water typically flow?
The site flows generally towards Houses Corner Road. There's some catch basin that's located in this location, and that's where it all flows to. And then it's carried across the street to the stormwater downstream.
So if this should proceed, what would happen to that process, to that equipment, that structure? Would it remain there?
The structure remains. What happens is, we collect the water, we intercept it effectively. We bring it to the infiltration pond, which is designed to infiltrate the water rather than have it discharge.
Where does it discharge to on the other side of Houses Corner? Is it wetlands? Is it a basin?
It discharges, this is, this wide area is the right-of-way for the highway. It discharges across the street, and then it flows eventually down where the railroad tracks is. There's a tributary to the Paul and Gill down there.
Okay. And does the, again, current conditions versus future, the property just behind the right-of-way, so the soccer fields, the private house down at the, you can't see it on here, all that property, where does that water drain to today on the periphery of this lot?
So there's basically a ridge line that runs kind of along the rear of the property, and that water discharges to this giant stormwater basin that also collects all the stormwater from the church. That goes through, if it builds up high enough, there's an overflow that crosses the street and goes to the same spot that, kind of where we are, discharging here, just parallel that 400 feet apart.
Okay, so it's safe to assume, because there's a natural ridge there, as you described it, that the conditions on that side of the ridge won't change either way?
Correct. We're actually picking up a little bit of the ridge water that would have gone there, but we're intercepting it, and we're dealing with that.
Okay.
I just have a general question. That big drainage basin, it's huge, right? And there's no shrubs, no trees planted around it at all? And that's crossing the road and discharging into the same area you indicated by the railroad tracks, right? Do you, did you construct the very large drainage basin? Or was that a different project by the church that owns the property?
That basin has nothing to do with this property.
That is very true, but I'm trying to understand the connection between the two and the impact across the street of that giant basin that has grass around it, and your one basin that I'm kind of seeing towards the middle of the diagram, and the other one that's going to be out by the corner there at the intersection that you're going to construct?
We're not constructing anything at the corner.
Okay.
We're constructing an infiltration pond at this location.
Okay.
This is an existing catch basin. Excuse me.
Okay.
But as far as this pond on the rear, that was developed as part of the church. It collects all of the runoff from the church. It doesn't discharge unless a really large storm happens, and then it overflows through a stormwater system that eventually ends down in the same tributary.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from this witness? Okay, let me ask from the dais, do we have any questions of any previous witnesses that we heard from last meeting? From the dais? For, for the doctor, okay.
Hello?
Doctor, for the record, you're still under oath. You understand?
Yeah.
Doc, you said you were going to have some kind of puppy training or some second floor. Is that going to be the same business entity as yours, or is that someplace?
Same entity, yeah.
Expect any like increase in personnel, or is that accounting in the staff?
That's accounting, yeah.
I actually, go ahead. I have one more question. In terms of the hours of operation, could you just clarify that a little bit?
Yeah, so my goal is to be open 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, seven days a week. That's it.
And if there's an emergency, a car gets, a dog gets hit by a car?
After hours, they would be referred to an emergency clinic, overnight clinic. We do not do overnight.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So if an animal were to have a surgery late in the day, so there would need to be so there would need to be staff on hands to service that animal, yes?
Correct, occasionally, when that happens, we have staff overnight, nurses or a doctor. But it's not common for that to happen.
Okay, just want to clarify so that it, that it's.
Yeah, the doors will be closed though.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's been two separate shifts?
Yes.
I just had one follow-up to what Bill was asking. The, um.
Catherine, would you mind using the microphone?
The puppy, um, kind of training, those are going to be like existing clients, it's not going to be like pulling from outside saying, you know, come on, come all, it's going to be existing clients that are using the veterinary services to say, you know, we need some help with our new puppy.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions of this witness?
Yeah, I don't know if it's for this witness, it probably is actually, so, um, last time in the hearing, in terms of trying to justify the variances, there was, uh, comments made around, um, the, the community benefits, service to the community, and there was a lot of conversation around, um, I believe, a lack of services like this and the communities in need of this. However, after thinking about it some more, I realized that the Andover Animal Hospital is just down Limecrest, about four miles away, five minutes, say. Um, and they're open, I think, six days a week, similar hours. Can you just reflect or comment on that a little bit, how, what the differences are and, um, being these are so close together, how that affects the impact or good for the community?
Yeah. I honestly don't know their hours, to be honest with you.
I believe they're eight to eight, Monday to Saturday, yeah.
I don't know if they see urgent care, so, um, yeah, my goal is to, to do walk-ins, urgent care. Um, I'm not sure if they provide that, I don't think they advertise for it. So it's, it's really an option, uh, for pet owners to have a place to go for walk-ins, um, besides Newton. Newton's the only one right now that's 24/7 that would accept walk-ins. So the goal is, uh, seven days a week, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, for emergency care and for walk-ins, yeah.
And, and also I, I asked, I think, last time, um, about the footprint of the building. And has there been consideration of, in order to comply more with the ordinance and to move things back a bit from the corner and from the roads and from the scenery, a smaller footprint for the building? And, you know, I understand that there are permitted uses here, um, other ones too, professional offices, um, executive offices, financial offices, things like that. How much thought has there been in terms of making the size of the building? Um, I mean, I, I, I do appreciate what you're doing on the inside of the building. Um, the thought that went into the care of the animals, the, the experience of the animals even, there's the smaller waiting area, having rooms right there, I mean, there's a lot of thought that went into that. But the building itself, the size of it and the orientation of it is resulting in a lot of variances. Um, and the parking very close to the road, et cetera, you know, the variances. So can you reflect on that a little bit and, and share the thought process?
So, yeah, ultimately I wanted 6,000 square feet, um, and, you know, or close to that. Making it 4,000, my current space is 3,000. So, um, to fit the seven, eight exam rooms that I would like would require about 6,000. So that's the approximate square footage that I was going for, excuse me, and that's what Paul managed to do, so that's, you know, as far as the footprint, I mean, I think it still works from the rendering, so, um, I don't know, maybe Paul can comment on the footprint itself, but originally that, that, my thought was 6,000 square feet, um, would be minimum. I mean, could I work with approximate that? Yeah, but I think that's, this is what we came up with.
Okay, that's all for now, thank you.
Any other questions for this witness? Any other questions from the dais from another witness?
I, I had one more question, I think it was just a clarification about lighting.
That's, that's probably, I would assume that's an engineer, engineering question.
Oh, lighting.
Yeah, just about lighting, you know, in terms of, uh, lighting in the evening, you know, what, what's the hours and how much light will there be?
Yeah, as we discussed last hearing, we would be, the lights would be on all evening. Um, we would dim them 50% at night. The only ones that would be at full brightness would be under the, um, at the doors, you know, where it's for safety purposes for people who do have to show up. Um, I do want to say there, it's at an intersection that's fully lit, 24, all, all evening. And also the church behind it is lit all night, so it's really no impact from a lighting perspective as that whole area is already lit.
Got it, thank you.
Dave, did you have concerns about the type of lighting that was being used here?
I did evaluate the lighting and just referring to my report of, uh, November 21st, 2023, on page three, item 5B, my one concern was, and I think it was addressed earlier, but I'll just reiterate it. I said, I note that the proposed lighting under the front canopy of the building is in the range of 14 to 34-foot candles, which is generally in the range of lighting under a gas station canopy. The applicant should evaluate if lighting in this area could be reduced. My concern was, I realized they want to draw attention to the front entrance so everyone knows where to go and have it safety so it can be entered into, especially late at night, but 34 is what you usually see under a gas canopy. So at a gas station for safety when you're pumping fuel and what have you, and I think the applicant indicated that they could tone that down.
We agreed to that, yes.
The rest of the site I was okay with.
And is it, just to clarify, am I missing this, at 9:00 or 10:00 PM, was there was conversation about the lights being lowered at that point as well, right, on the building?
Um, the ones at the doors, like just physically around the, the security lights would stay on full, everything else would be dimmed 50%.
Okay, so building and then, I know there was conversations around the lot, parking lot lights as well, okay.
Was there a time that we established for that? I don't recall.
He closes at 8 o'clock, so I think 9 o'clock.
9 o'clock?
9 o'clock makes sense.
Mr. Simmons, one last question for you. Um, with all the testimony that you've heard based on, on variances and so on, do you have any concerns outside of your report since that was issued prior to testimony?
No, Madam Chair, the, again, referring to the November 21st, 2023 report, just a couple items I'd like to highlight just for the board. Uh, the first one is on page two, uh, under zoning 2D, as in Dave, says by scaling from the plan, the parking lot area ratio calculates out to approximately 20%, not 10% shown in the zone table. However, it's still less than the 25% allowable. The only reason, both, both are under the 25%. Uh, the only reason I wanted to clarify that, when I did, uh, look up parking area definition in the township's ordinance, uh, just to read it in the record under parking area, shall mean an open area other than a street or other public way, used for the parking of motor vehicles and available for use as a service or privilege to guests, licensees, clients, customers, suppliers, or residents. It shall include driveways and access drives located within the lot area. So when I included those areas, when I calculated, I came up just approximately by scaling 20%, just to clarify that. But again, it's under the 25%, so it's not an issue, if you will, but I just wanted to clarify where that came from in my report.
Does that need to be, uh, changed or revised on the plan to make sure?
I, I think it should, just so there's a record of it. Again, it's under the 25%, but I just want to clarify that.
For clarification purposes?
Uh, the other item I just wanted to highlight on page three of my report under site plan, details on the proposed generator on the easterly side of the proposed building to be provided, including noise level, fuel type, and noise generated at the property lines, and the hours of operation to exercise and test the generator to be specified. My recollection, and I'd stand corrected, is that that was one of the conditions that the applicant was requesting be provided to the construction department later on to meet all the requirements of the township as far as noise and what have you. And I'm okay with that, I just wanted to make sure that they also knew the hours of operation or what's going to be allowed by the township ordinance during the weekdays, once a week between certain hours so that they're not annoying anyone in the neighborhood. Granted, the church is far away, the shop right and the railroad is far away, but again, just to be consistent, I know the board's seen other applications where we've specified the same thing. We talked about the foot candles under the canopy. The other thing I just wanted to point out so it was clear to the board on page four of the report, under item 7A, letter I, underwater, the size of material, the proposed water service line to be reviewed and approved by the Sparta Township Water Department and construction official, this water service will be privately owned and maintained by the applicant. You may have seen a report from the water department, I was, Corey Long, the supervisor, I was copied on that. One of the reasons they're concerned about it, and I just wanted to make sure the applicant understood and was aware of this, is that they're basically tapping, as I understand it, off the main transmission main that comes from the Germany Flats wells and goes towards the center of town. That's more or less a high-pressure main because of the distance and the elevation it has to go. Don't quote me on the numbers, but it might be close to about 200 PSI. To put that in perspective, normal pressure is around 60 to 80 that they operate under, so it is a high-pressure main. This applicant, when they go before the water department, in all likelihood will have to coordinate with them and put in a pressure-reducing valve station just so they don't blow their own equipment apart, uh, and can handle that much pressure, and they'll be responsible for maintaining and operating all that equipment. Other than that, I, I agree with what Mr. Dykstra described on the stormwater basis. Uh, quite frankly, when we first looked at it, uh, the staff in our office and I were looking at it and we're thinking it was going to come to that large basin on the church property as well. But once we study the grades, I agree, it goes towards Houses Corner Road if it does overflow, and then it would go down towards the intersection into that inlet and discharge as Mr. Dykstra described it. So I didn't have any, we didn't have any problem with that. And I believe, unless the applicant corrects me, all the other items in our report, they're willing to correct the plans to address what we've listed.
Okay, perfect.
Yes, ma'am.
And Mr. Maug, given the testimony that you've heard, do you have any reservations, questions, anything you'd like to clarify?
No, I just want, I did want to, um, raise the, the same thing that Dave brought up about the parking area ratio. And I know that, you know, Dave said he did a rough calculation, their, the calculation I did was based off their plans, included the total parking and driveway area of 14,669 feet, I'd called this out in my memo as well. And I just wanted to be more exact to make sure that it didn't trigger any kind of additional variance relief. And it is, uh, what I calculated to 22.5%, so a little higher than what Dave had scaled off. But I just want to make sure that there, you know, clarify that that's the number that should be revised on the plans in addition to the other housekeeping items that were brought up, um, in my memo and in Dave's memo, and, um, and should be revised to the 22.5%, not under a variance condition, it still complies with the requirement, but it is, you know, higher than what was included, um, on the plan. And there was a, a number of other, um, housekeeping items that were responded to in the engineer's memo before the last meeting. And I agree with the statements, I agree with the rear yard setback, the way it was interpreted from the code, the way the applicant did, I think that's correct. So, um, what I had raised in my memo, um, they responded to and corrected me. Other than that, I, I think, um, you know, as long as the conditions that have been agreed to, um, are incorporated, I think that, um, the applicant has shown that they, you know, have, have responded to what this board has, um, requested. And I believe they've responded to my, my memo and the testimony that I brought up, including, um, some of the landscaping items that were brought up at the last meeting, um, and the architectural, um, comments. But other than that, I think, yeah, they, they've satisfied.
Okay, great. With that, I'm going to.
I have a question, actually, so, uh, Mr. Simmons, you mentioned that the applicant would likely need a water pressure reduction function. Not familiar with that necessarily, where, how, how does that, what does it look and feel like, and how big is it, and where would that sit typically?
Is that, well, I, I would assume that that would need to be a, a Dykstra question, seeing as though it's his plan?
Yep.
Typically, we put, we had the same type of pressure in North Village, so we have dual, um, pressure-reducing valves in the water, um, area coming into the building, is how we've dealt with it.
Okay, those are on the property itself, underground?
They're actually inside the building.
Inside the building, okay.
Yeah, the, the main comes into the building, goes through two PRVs, which reduce the vet pressure down to the standard 60 to 80 pressure.
Okay.
Okay, I would like to open it to the floor, given our, our time constraints and that we have a whole other hearing after this, so.
Good evening, Anand Dash, um, attorney, uh, law pro se, uh, law firm of Kennedy's in Basking Ridge. I'm also a resident of Sparta residing at 17 Ponderosa Trail, Sparta.
I believe you need to be sworn.
Well, question, Madam Chair, is what are we going to do during this part? We're going to allow the public to ask questions now of the applicant's witnesses?
Yes, we're going to allow the public to ask questions of the applicants.
Questions now, so there's no need to swear anybody in when there's only questions. When we open it to the public for comment and testimony, then we need to swear them in.
Dave, I'm happy to, to avoid, in sake of efficiency, not ask questions of the applicant's witnesses, but I, I'd like to make, uh, my argument, and I'm happy to be sworn in.
Well, you know what, rather than, no, let's finish the questions first.
I have no, I have no questions for the.
Okay, then let's see if anybody else does before we get to statements then.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Oh, wait, so, yeah, anyone who has questions of the applicant, just basic questions, not, not testimony, just basic questions on the.
Okay.
I, I think this is.
Let them do their questions and then we'll go to public statement, if you can make your statement.
Can we make the questions, just a little abbreviated because it's so much more important.
I understand your point, but.
It's fine, you can have.
There are people, you know, in the public who, who we'd like to hear from. So anyone who has questions, please come forward.
And to make sure the public understands, this is for questions only, not statements, not witnesses. We'll get to those secondary.
What if you slip into a comment, it's going to be.
Comments are going to come next.
Comments are after questions.
Wouldn't it be just easier to swear you in instead of?
Well, the reason, the reason why we're doing it this way is because the, the questions may answer some of the, the commentary you may have.
Yeah, and then you have commentary and questions mixed together, it gets messy. It's better to have just questions followed by commentary.
So if we have questions of, of the applicants, let's, let's take care of those now quickly and concisely. Mr. Scott?
Hi, Mark Scott, 9 Woblo Parkway.
Mark, what's your listing?
Scott.
Scott.
I was just wondering, why is this, uh, proposed property not in front of the zoning board instead of the planning board? I mean, if you look at the definition.
Now we're getting into statements or commentary, we need.
This is, these are questions of the applicant.
Of the applicant's witnesses.
Why isn't, wasn't this brought to the zoning board first?
Deal with that as a question during public comment. It's not a question of the applicant.
So if nobody has a question of the applicant, we can move forward, but if you have questions of the applicant, please.
Mike Devine Oak Parkway, I, I still don't know exactly where this is located. Is that the intersection of Houses Corner and 15, or is it down Houses Corner?
At the intersection.
Is that in which, which, uh, northeast, southeast?
Southeast.
So if I go up 15, right, right in the right-hand side is the small church and then the big church, or is it across the street from that on?
The church is behind this property, there's their, they have like an office and then this.
You mean the real big church or the?
Yeah.
The real big church.
So this is actually between that church and Houses Corner?
Correct.
Okay, uh, I think you said something that softened the design, I kind of agree that it looks soft, but I'd characterize that as contemporary, I don't know what, what you would characterize, it doesn't really matter, but I'm trying to get a sense of the aesthetic compatibility with what's surrounding it. Is there, what, I know apparently the big church is right there, what else is adjacent to it or across the street from it?
I mean, in that area, you have North Village to the north of it, you have the medical campus to the south of it, both of that have a contemporary flair. And I think this is right between the two and it blends in nicely.
Apparently, and I could be wrong, you, you want to have the front setback that was considerably less than the standard, is that right? Or am I confused with something else? How far is it from Houses Corner Road back to the, to this site?
Our question is 60 feet.
And what, what is the minimum supposed to be from by statute?
100 feet.
What's the functional reason why you have to do that?
Um, last, last hearing, we went through all of this.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I wasn't.
Unfortunately, that's the problem, is that a lot of the public was not here for that, so we need to.
Okay, I'll bring the planner up to answer.
Just, just briefly, I'm not, you know.
It's basically a depth issue with the lot, it's a corner lot. And it has two front yards and a rear yard, and so when. And it has two front yards and a rear yard, and so when you look at the triangle that's left of building area, it's very limited.
I'm confused when you say a corner lot, I thought you turned right on Houses Corner to get to it.
The one side of the lot is Route 15, the other side is Houses Corner.
Maybe Mr. Dykstra, you can show Mr. Devine the-
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry if you went through just before, or-
Mr. Devine, by the way, D-E-V-I-N-E?
Yes.
So this is, the intersection of Route 15 is on the left side-
Yep.
-to Houses Corner Road. The church is behind that way, and this is the corner lot.
Where's that little church, is that further down?
There's like a little building, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I think it's some kind of church there as well.
It's the office for the big church.
And do you enter, do you enter this from 15 or Houses Corner?
You come up 15, you'd make a right if you were coming from the center of Sparta, and then the entrance is on Houses Corner.
So there is no entrance from 15, apparently?
Correct.
All right, thanks.
Good evening, Kathy Ebbinkhousen, Scudders Road.
Kathy, how do you spell your last name? Thank you.
And please forgive me if some of these questions have already been asked and answered, because I was, I too wasn't here during the last hearing. The first question I have is around the site distance triangle. This is the first time I'm seeing the building in relation to the intersection, so my question was around, did we consider the visibility turning the corner from either Houses Corner or 15 around the building?
The site meets all of the site standards for sight lines.
Okay. Are there pedestrians expected to be moving toward North Village from the site?
Unlikely.
Well, the reason I'm asking is because maybe somebody's picking up a prescription, just wondering if there's pedestrian traffic expected.
It's not anticipated.
Okay. And how tall is the building? I believe someone said it was two stories.
It's two stories, 34 feet.
34 feet. Are there any petitions for modification of the traffic light at that intersection? And the reason I ask-
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, and the reason I ask is because that intersection is a bit dicey as it is, so the question I have is, have we considered the left turn there and the danger of it at the moment, and if more traffic would be generated in that intersection, if a left-turning arrow could be modified for that light?
This, I mean, we're at a signalized intersection, I don't see any issue with safety at that intersection.
Have you ever tried to make a left to Houses Corner Road, traveling south?
To enter this property, you're not making a left to Houses Corner Road, you're making a right.
Well, it depends on what direction you're going, right? Saying from Route 15 onto Houses Corner Road.
Yeah, you could make a left there. I mean, you'd have to wait, obviously.
Right, my question is, have you ever done it?
Of course I've done it.
Wondering, so it appears there's a new ingress and egress proposed, is that right?
To Houses Corner Road.
To Houses Corner Road, okay. Is there a reason we can't use, this property can't use the existing ingress and egress that is about a few feet down the road?
It has no rights to that ingress and egress.
Got it. I heard talk of an overflow for the water basin, does that mean it's gonna go over the road?
No.
What does that mean exactly?
The water that does not get infiltrated into the basin, there's a catch basin that collects it, and it goes on subsurface across the street.
Under the road?
Yes.
Okay. I believe this was answered during the last hearing time, but where, and maybe even brought up tonight, where is the bathroom for the pets expected to be?
You mean when they come to visit, like they stop?
Outside, is there a bathroom area for the pets outside?
There's an area outside the building where they can relieve themselves on the left side if they come and they, before they go into the building, yes.
And I heard town water, but also septic, is that right?
Correct.
That's all I have, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Eden Mirman, 12 Brook Drive.
12 what?
12 Brook Drive.
Okay.
I have some questions about the design of the building. When I look at the rendering, I'm looking at this one first. That white portion of the building, what material is that?
Metal panel.
Metal panel, okay. The louvers, are they natural wood, or are they man-made material?
They would be a man-made material. They'll look just replicated, just like wood.
And that's color fast?
Excuse me?
That's color fast.
Yes.
When I look at this same rendering, do I see two lights illuminating?
Those flows from the roof.
Okay.
Those will pour water out so that you can see there's a clog.
All right, so the walls of the building are not illuminated as such. The, what is the total amount of lighting? When I see it indicated, I see lighting around the parking?
Those are just for the rendering, those are just for the rendering. Lighting is what's proposed on the site lighting plan.
Okay, which, which I did not see, so.
I can point it out to you. There. On the main parking lot, there's one post-mounted light, then between the two parking lots, there's another post-mounted light.
And how high up in, from the ground are those lights?
Believe they're 30 feet.
And what is the light output of each of those?
They're set up in order to meet the requirement of a half-foot candle.
And how will the light be thrown sideways?
They're LED fixtures, they're downward-facing, and the light is controlled based on a light pattern that, so the light doesn't throw back like into the street.
So 30 feet high, that's then almost the height of the building.
Right. 25.
25 feet, I correct.
The light posts are 25 feet, which is then lower than the highest part of the building. The two lanterns that are shown, are they just for the image also? So we don't think that makes it look nicer?
It adds an aesthetic to working with it.
Do you think we would appreciate the aesthetic in every life?
I think they're needed.
So then, the second, well, they're not needed, it's just that it is, it looks nice. And if at one point, the idea was to soften the look of this contemporary building, that is a nice touch. Say, Mr. Light Poles that illuminate the parking area, what can be done to make it more aesthetically or design-consistent with a rural setup? So what do you have in mind?
I don't think they're needed. All right, I'll speak to it.
Yeah, I think, I think-
Maybe, maybe my question was not clear. If at one point you have three 25-foot pole lights with a cone of light coming down, that is functionally, I'm sure, sufficient, but how does it figure in the appearance of that part of our rural township?
I think it, in this type of environment, two poles is much better than putting five short poles with decorative fixtures on it. Just my opinion.
In this kind of environment, do you mean for engineering or for aesthetics?
This is an economic development zone that we're in.
Sure, but we're still looking at it.
This is North Village, which has these same exact lights, just 30 feet. And to the south is the medical campus, same lights, 30 feet, so it fits in with what's going on on that street.
Okay, so those are 30 feet, these are 25, but otherwise, you plan to keep them utilitarian?
I think they disappear if you use these type of lights. I think they just disappear into the landscape.
Question about the landscaping, and that is my last topic. When I look at the rendering, again, this one, I see these beautiful mature trees. Are they part of your landscaping, or are they existing trees, or are they just for a pleasing image?
It's just the backdrop, it's just the backdrop for the rendering.
Are you planning to surround this property with tree cover?
Planting plan will match Mr. Dykstra's plan.
And what kind of trees will they be? What kind of height and type?
Can you speak into the microphones as you volley the exchange, because-
Okay, sure, yeah, yeah.
Hi, this is Jason Dunn, I'm still sworn from last meeting.
And you're still under oath, Mr. Dunn?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'm a professional planner and landscape architect, I help design the landscaping. I want to take a look. So the tree symbols you see around the perimeter of the property include species like cedar, juniperus virginianica, that's a natural-growing pioneer species, has some boxwood, mirica pensibonica, which is a baywood, bayberry, sugar maple trees, red maples, and inkberry holly, winterberry holly, try to do a mix of attractive native materials.
And those are all medium-sized trees?
The installations, the sugar maples obviously get to be quite large, but there's only a few of them. There's probably five of them around the perimeter, and, but you're correct, most of the trees are medium-growth, like the shad berry and the eastern red bud. There's also, but there's also many shrubs that will grow to like four to five feet, which are viburnum, there's also some ground cover, which would be the creeping juniper.
Okay, so, back to the microphone. So on this lot, the building will take prominence, visual prominence, and the plantings will be essentially necessary. We only have five larger trees, and all the others are pretty much below four feet.
To be more precise, in the front, between, facing the intersection, we have two American hop hornbeams, two bugle pines. So I guess you'll see like through the two hornbeams and over the shrubs, the shrubs will like protect the parking area from being in full view, but you're correct, you'll be able to see the building fairly prominently.
All right.
Here we have one, two, three lichen trees.
Right, three maples, red maples in the back of the property. And on the back corner of the property, between the, between the building and the septic, we have three northern white pines. Yes, so it's really worked, I, in my opinion, it's meant to work with the building, not to screen it completely, but also not to have the building just rise up out of the ground with no landscaping to tie it down, if you will.
Yeah, okay, all right. Thank you, thanks for that. All right. So that was my two areas of questions, I don't want to hold up the meeting much longer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jenny Derrick, Stappages Sparta, I have a procedural question. What is the conflict that prohibits Mr. Collins from being here?
Conflict is that Mr. Collins' firm has a relationship with one of the parties.
And can you elaborate on that?
No, I don't, there's no need to elaborate on-
Which party?
There's no need to elaborate on any conflict, but there is a conflict, that's why I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I believe we can move on to testimony from the public.
Okay, and so everybody understands, I think Mr. Dash is gonna go first. This is an opportunity where we'll swear you in, you can give testimony, make comments, give your reasons why you don't like something or do like something. And same symbol of procedure, you have to give your name, give us your last name and your address, and then I'll swear you in.
Yes.
Name on the record first.
Good evening, I'm entering my appearance tonight, I'm pro se, Anand Dash, 120 Mountain View Boulevard, Basking Ridge, New Jersey. Sparta residence is 17 Ponderosa Trail, Sparta, New Jersey.
And you said you're entering your appearance, for the record, you're in-
Pro se.
You're an attorney.
I am, correct.
Okay, let's place you under oath.
Fine.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
Good evening. So just picking up on Dave's last comment, there's nothing I don't like about this. For those who know me, nothing is dear to my heart other than my wife, my children, and my two dogs. I have one of them with me, actually, accompanies me 24/7, my German Shepherd. I have the utmost respect for the field of veterinary medicine. This is not personal. My impatience initially that you saw was because all the testimony that the board heard in the last hour, except for the question by Mr. Derrick's, and the previous testimony that started at 11:30, is void ab initio. There's no legal effect to it. This board has committed a legal, serious error by usurping the role of the zoning board. NJSA 40-55D-20 states, "Any power expressly authorized by this, by the MLUL, the municipal land use law, to be exercised by the planning board or the Board of Adjustment shall not be exercised by any body except as otherwise provided in this act. Any exercise of this body of the planning board's jurisdiction is ultra-veres, Tannenbaum versus Wall Board of Adjustment. None of the testimony with respect to the lighting, the aesthetics, the facade, the landscaping, the height of the trees, it's ultra-veres, void ab initio. The reason is, is our Supreme Court has made very clear that this board is without jurisdiction to hear a D1 use variance and a D3 conditional use variance. We begin the analysis that was not undertaken by this board respectfully last time at 11 o'clock at night. With the ordinance itself, our courts have instructed planning boards in this state to follow the ordinance. The ordinance, 18-4.29 ED, this is a property in the economic development zone, as we've heard. It enumerates the principal permitted uses as follows: scientific research, office buildings for business, professional, executive, administrative purposes, storage buildings, warehouses, agriculture uses on five or more acres, processes for manufacture, indoor recreational uses, and transshipment facilities. The self-vowed application tonight, as set forth in the applicant's own reports, is for a full-scale veterinary animal hospital. Okay? The ordinance also provides that, and I quote, "Any use that is not specifically permitted is prohibited." Okay, that's Section E, "Any use not specifically permitted is prohibited." As I heard last time, our board's planner correctly noted that a conditional use is noted in the ordinance. 18-4.7, Section 10. Funeral homes, healthcare facilities, and veterinary hospitals. This is strict constructionist language, right? So the legislator, okay, I'll broadly refer to the Sparta Township governing body who created these ordinances, specifically and deliberately contemplated the use of a veterinary hospital. Now, how do we know that? Because they use it in Section 10 of 18-4.7. And yet, when they went to decide what are the specifically permitted uses in the ED zone, it's nowhere to be found. Every decision of a land use board falls from the use, whether it's permitted or not. There are cases in New Jersey, and most recently in Cherry Hill, New Jersey, I had spoken with the planner before this meeting, and I'm offering hearsay, because it's allowed in these type of meetings, okay? Had the exact same application come in for veterinary use, and the planner agreed that a professional medical office is a diametrically different use- a professional medical office is a diametrically different use than a veterinary use. And how do we know that? Because the American Veterinary Medical Association has catalogued in resolutions that I have here, and I'm happy to read, distinctions between office use, clinical use, hospital use. So in addition, the New Jersey veterinary, the chapter that speaks to the licensing of veterinarians speaks about false advertising, and how do you identify what facility you're using? They define a hospital to have any type of short-term inpatient stay. And the testimony last time was, there may be, I'm quoting from memory, and I had reviewed the video, that there could be observation, or a procedure I cannot recite because of its complexity and medical terminology, there may be overnight observation. Now, we have squarely fallen into a hospital use. And I am, I take umbrage, because this is an issue that has been before this board in other significant matters. To characterize a medical office as a veterinary not only violates the plain meaning of the statutory construction, it actually goes against the dictates of the ITE manual, which the applicant has identified as a veterinary hospital animal use code 640. If you look at code 640 of the veterinary, excuse me, of the ITE, 640 is for animal hospital veterinary clinic, 640. And there is actually an entirely different category of land uses, beginning with Section 710. And one of those uses is 720, mental, excuse me, medical dental office building. Different use. This board is without jurisdiction. It's taken jurisdiction on the erroneous advice of its planner. Okay? So the testimony is ultra vereas. The board's authority is ultra vereas. I would like to stipulate that this matter either be transferred to the zoning board or for an interpretation. It's a fundamental legal error to take jurisdiction. I don't have, if the zoning board decides that its use is permitted for it. But all this testimony that we've just been discussing is prohibited by Section 20 of the MLUL. And in fact, there's precedence for this in New Jersey. Right? There's precedent for this in New Jersey. Right? This is a novel legal theory. This isn't a difficult concept. You cannot call an animal hospital that is, that is offering medical surgical treatment to its pets, one of whom I have deep love for, two of actually. So it's not personal. It's not personal to the applicant, to the owner, if I was a doctor. Okay? Nothing against the profession. I think it's one of the most noble. This is a fundamental grave error this board has committed. And in fairness to the applicant, actually, in fairness to the applicant, we wasted their time, because they should be before the zoning board.
Mr. Dash, I absolutely appreciate your testimony, and I don't really want to cut you off at the knees, but in about three minutes, I'm going to do so. So please, if you have additional points, please make them.
Yeah, this, the idea that this board has taken jurisdiction is straightforward. Okay? And it needs to carefully think about this, because there are consequences. Okay? There are consequences, and we've seen the consequences of that. So I'm going to submit to this board that it transfer this matter to the zoning board without further delay. And if there's going to be rebuttal by the planner, I'm going to reserve my right to respond.
Appreciate that.
Okay. So I think the board needs to understand that the applicant has a position, and that's fine, and they can argue that it's a professional office. I think I've cogently argued that it's not, that this board doesn't have jurisdiction. It's not, the decision, the last point, is not the planner's decision, it's not the lawyer's decision. They are advisors. This board needs to take into consideration what I just articulated, the standards that I've articulated, and make a decision on whether this board has improperly taken jurisdiction of this application. I'm going to reserve my right if there's a rebuttal.
I'm sure Mr. Dash is right in that, you know, an initial gatekeeping issue is who has jurisdiction, because the jurisdiction of the planning board and the Board of Adjustment are clearly just what is allowed under the MLUL. Normally, that's addressed at the very beginning of an application, kind of where the application gets shunted to. We addressed it briefly, I think, at the last hearing, but now it's been brought into sharp focus, so I think it bears some consideration by everybody. Mr. Dash is also correct that Catherine and I give the board advice, but we don't tell the board what to do in this regard. In fact, I was once up on appeal, and the judge indicated Mr. Brady ended up being right in what he told the board it had to do, but the board didn't have to do it, he should have just advised them. So I'm very well aware that's our function here. Mr. Dash has brought it into focus. He was courteous enough to give me a call. I talked to him in the car on the way home, he told me a little bit about it. I don't have the code book, and I was in the car when I was driving. I've taken a quick look, you know, on my cellphone. I note that there is, in fact, a conditional use section that talks about, I believe it's veterinary or veterinarian hospitals, and there's also a definition that talks about a veterinarian office, but there's no definition of veterinarian hospital. It also appears, as he indicated, that a veterinarian hospital is not among the permitted uses in the ED zone. But as I said, I'm not your normal board attorney. I'm giving you a brief overview of what I figured out after Mr. Dash called me. I think what I'm going to do is kind of hand this over to Catherine, who I'm sure--
So I have two questions of you, Mr. Brady. At what point did you and Mr. Dash have a conversation?
Um, I was on the way home, so it was maybe 10 minutes--
On the way home after--
From the office this afternoon.
From your office this afternoon. Okay, so you had this information prior to us sitting here at 7:30. So at what point did you think it would be prudent to provide that information to this board before we spent an hour or better on a hearing that we may not have needed to?
Well, the applicant, we had already addressed the issue and had started the hearing. In my opinion, the applicant should have been given the opportunity, I didn't think frankly it would take an hour, to finish up the little bit that was left of the hearing, and then when this came up during the public testimony, we can circle back and address it. The finishing of the hearing also provided the total context of what is going to occur here, what hours, et cetera. They addressed a little bit about the--
No, which I appreciate. I just think that members of the board here kind of feel a little bit blindsided about, you know, especially when we know that we've been dealing with meetings that have been going till midnight or later, that might have been helpful to have had that information so we could have addressed those issues upfront--
Right.
--and been a little bit more clear with how things should have moved--
Right.
--forward. That would have been very helpful.
On the other hand, I thought with the applicant having almost finished--
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Sebastian.
You referred to the previous meeting.
Right.
And it was still not discussed, only until it was brought in the light that the previous meeting took place. And there was no communication, you know, from the previous meeting till now to support--
What's an issue at the previous meeting? Catherine--
We've spoken to, but it came to the light, how did it get to the planning board versus going to the zoning board first to the planning board?
And Catherine addressed that, and we took jurisdiction, and as far as I was concerned, okay, that was--
So it was determined, based on that previous discussion, we were going to proceed, correct?
Right. Right.
So Catherine--
Yeah. Mr. Dash has brought this into focus and made it an issue.
I don't think we need to litigate it here tonight.
No, we don't, but now let's let Mr. Ma take her position.
We can problem solve later. I think we should probably get on with figuring out what we're going to do.
Would you like me to provide my advisement to the board? I stand by my previous assessment of the use that was brought up by Mr. Day at the last meeting, and frankly, that was only brought to my attention. Mr. Day's comments and feedback on that were only provided probably an hour while I was driving towards the first meeting on this application, and I had, you know, an opportunity before the meeting to, you know, look through the code and remember what I'd done when I was doing the review, and I had looked through it. I think I want to caution that Mr. Dash has mischaracterized a little bit of how I presented the use. I did not say that this is a medical use. I did say that it falls under the category of professional use, which includes things, I'll give you the definition, shall mean a use related to professional services and/or administrative and executive purposes, including, but not limited to, architecture, medicine, dentistry, engineering, law, accounting, insurance, and real estate. While he did state the section of the code that specifically says that uses that are not explicitly permitted will be prohibited, is in direct conflict with this definition, which says including but not limited to. So there is, I'll call it wiggle room, to interpret what a professional use is. And in my professional opinion, because professional use is used very, very frequently in the code, in the town center districts, it relies entirely upon office uses that are professional in nature. And in the town center, there is a veterinary hospital, there are medical offices, there are other professional businesses that probably fall under this category in an interpretation. And so my interpretation was based upon that, that this has a wide breadth of other professional uses, of which I felt that the veterinary use fell under this category, which is a permitted use in the ED zone. I did also speak to Mr. Day's concerns that veterinary use appears elsewhere in the code, and I think I called it an orphan section, because while a conditional use under funeral homes, funeral homes, healthcare facilities, and veterinary hospitals does exist in the code, nowhere in a single zone is veterinary hospital permitted or included as a conditional use. So those conditions don't apply to anything. Even if this were to go to the zoning board, because it's not called out as a veterinary use is not a conditional use in the ED zone, it wouldn't even be a conditional use variance. It would be a straight D1 variance, because it wouldn't be, let's say, it wouldn't be permitted in this zone. So the conditional uses don't apply, the conditions don't apply to a single zone in the township, which is why I brought up that it is orphaned, in that it doesn't apply anywhere to any zone. And so as I mentioned, I think the most, the tantamount issue is whether or not this use can be interpreted to be a professional use, based on the definition, based on it being a permitted use in the ED zone. My professional opinion, and as I advise the board, is that yes, it does, it does fall under that category, and it's up to this board to decide if they believe, if they also believe that to be true.
And as I said, I don't think it's not difficult. I don't, I didn't really understand what she just explained, because I think it's very simple. Strict statutory construction, courts have said, looks at the plain language of the statute. We have a statute that enumerates the permitted uses. We all agree here, that's not one of the permitted uses. Right? The ordinance goes on to state that the permitted, any uses not explicitly permitted are prohibited. Right? And I've also provided you with evidence, right?
But in the same sense--
Excuse me.
Right. It also stipulates--
You're litigating, you're litigating this based on that last testimony. You said you wanted another response back to her testimony, right? You're just throwing, you're just throwing out general statements. Support the previous statement with some additional information.
Right. You said you didn't understand what she said, so how can you rebut what she said if you don't understand what she said? If you have clarified questions of Catherine, please ask them to Catherine.
I don't have any questions.
Okay, so then you're not rebutting--
I am rebutting it.
But you're not. You're pontificating, you're not rebutting a testimony that was being made. That's basically what it comes down to. If you have questions of the testimony that's provided, because it's not clear to you, then please ask those questions so that you have clarification and you can provide an actual rebuttal, and that I will appreciate.
Okay, well, respectfully, as I said, the analysis, I take umbridge with your statements and with yours as well.
I appreciate that--
Okay, so now let me finish.
But this dais is now taking umbridge. You've made those points.
You're speaking for yourself. Let me finish. If I could speak one at a time. Okay?
But it's my--
The conditional use, excuse me?
It's my dais.
This is getting a little heated, everyone.
I'm trying to make a point, and you're interrupting me. I didn't interrupt you when you were speaking.
I understand your point.
So let me finish. I'm not going to have a--
Are you making a separate point? Please.
It's the same point.
If it's the same point, then we've heard that.
No, I'm going to make it again.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. The conditional use, the ordinance speaks to veterinary use as a conditional use. Okay? The legislator in drafting, what a board needs to look at is the intent of the ordinance. The intent of the ordinance is set forth in the permitted uses. Okay? The very fact that the legislator used veterinary use in Section 18-4.7 suggests that they could have used it as a permitted use in the ED zone, and they did not. Okay? Based on strict statutory construction, it's not a permitted use. This board is without jurisdiction, and I rest my case that this matter be transferred to the zoning board without further delay.
And I appreciate that, and I'm sure there are others who have testimony that they'd like to make.
Chairwoman Luciana, I just wanted to respond under the same exact argument. The definition for professional use is, it could say, is limited only to architecture, medicine, dentistry, engineering, law, accounting, insurance, and real estate.
Correct.
And in the construction of that definition, they specifically left it open, I believe, for--
In that same ordinance, basically what we're saying is, if I'm hearing this correctly, is because regardless of the fact that it says conditional uses are X, Y, and Z, it also says that under professional use is here but not limited to. So that ambiguity left room, which is what you were talking about in terms of orphaning, the ability for this board to proceed if we so chose. So that seems to be my understanding of what's happening. Mr. Brady, please correct me if I'm wrong.
It allows this board to take a look at that, those permitted uses, which include professional uses, and professional uses include the ones Catherine indicated, architecture, law, medical. Veterinary medical, human medical, whatever it may be, it's medical. And so it allows this board, if it desires to maintain jurisdiction, that it is a permitted use. Since it was brought up and challenged specifically by Mr. Dash, I think the board should officially make a motion to either accept jurisdiction under that or not accept jurisdiction--
I agree.
--and note on it so it's clear--
But I would like to hear any additional testimony from the public before we do that.
Before you do that? Okay.
Correct. Are there any other individuals who'd like to make testimony?
Mark Scott, nine Puebla Parkway. According to--
Scott, would you raise your hand?
Sure.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes. And I'm sure Mrs. Sarnad will agree with me that the National Association of Industrial and Office Parks is really the gold standard industry in the real estate industry, and they define office buildings such as this. According to the NAOP, the Commercial Real Estate Development Association, an animal hospital is not typically considered an office building. An animal hospital is a specialized facility that provides medical care and treatment for animals, whereas an office building is a general-purpose building primarily used for administrative and professional activities. This is just what professionals define it as. Thank you.
Good evening. I got to get swerved in, or how's that work?
Who is your name?
Tom Alfson.
How do you spell your last name?
A-L-F-S-E-N.
Would you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. So, you know, listening to the testimony, some arguments from over here, I think the board was very clear in your interpretation, Catherine. So me is just like a Sparta resident. Grew up in Sparta since I was 10 years old, went to Sparta High School. I've had multiple farms in Sparta. I have a lot of farm animals, I have a lot of working animals on the farm. So going back to Dr. Surf, my wife is a little bit of a hypochondriac when it comes to my kids' health and my animals' health. So about 10 years ago, she went looking for the best doctor in veterinary. She found it in Dr. Surf, Cornell graduate. She found it in Dr. Surf, Cornell graduate, which I would, I don't know if everybody knows, but like Cornell's like the best vet college you can go to. Went to Travis, been with him for 10 years, he started in Franklin, working under somebody. He fortunately went, started his own practice in Hardeston. I would love to see something like this in Sparta, something that's very much needed, the hours that are needed. I can't tell you how many times one of my farm dogs got hurt, and I found myself driving 80, 100 miles an hour to Newton to try to save their life. You know, Travis, even off hours, I'm able to call him, you know, he, you know, helped me out at the beginning of the year, you know, one of my dogs had bone cancer, he amputated a leg, gave her another four months, and then when it was time to put her down, it was on a Sunday, came to my house. And then three months later, same thing on a Sunday, needed to put my other big dog down, died within three months. Travis is always there. I promise you, it would be the biggest detriment if we don't allow Travis to bring his skillset to this township. I know there's Andover, there was testimony about Andover Hospital, the other hospitals here, there's no better vet than Travis. So you want the best vet? This is the guy. You have a professional team here that explained to you the use, the zoning, the water flows, you know, whether the building, I don't know, it's stone to me, right? It's a beautiful architecture, whoever drew it. You know, we're arguing over stuff when we could literally, Travis did not ask me to be here. I've never had dinner with Travis, I've never had lunch with Travis, I haven't met his kids. I have met his wife, she works, I think, with you. So I came here on my own accord to tell you, you know, I'm not a lawyer, I didn't understand a lot of terms and language over here, you guys were very clear, you are going to get the best vet in this town if you get Travis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vivian Promater, five Morgan Drive.
Vivian, would you raise your right hand, please? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I swear. I am concerned that so many variances are involved in this piece of property. It's not just one or two, the setbacks are not there. I absolutely know that my particular, where I live, those setbacks were kept. It didn't matter if I got a shallow backyard, Sparta said setbacks, they've got to be there. You can drive through, it's Sparta Chase, and look, and you'll see all the houses are setback. Nobody, they need no exceptions for anybody's house. Here we have a very busy intersection, and it's not just one dimension that is short. There are several dimensions that require variances. If they say, oh, well, it's just a few feet here, but it's a lot. It's here, there, and somewhere else. And I really think that if you have these rules and you have setback rules, if you start getting loose, it's going to get looser and looser. And the other thing, I mean, I'm going to be 83 next month, and I lived in Parsippany for 20 years, and we had a, they put in a business park on Route 46, I'm sorry, and they said, we're going to leave the mountain at the end near Intervale Road, we're going to leave it, don't worry, it'll be a buffer between this business park and mountain lakes and the Intervale housing. And sure enough, I went to, I moved to Greensboro, Greensboro, North Carolina, 14 years I was away, I come back, and you know what's on that mountain? Whole Foods, Shake Shack, you could go on and on. And they said, oh, don't worry, it'll be a buffer. This is what happens to towns. Think, you say, oh, setback. We'll make an exception here. And it goes on and on and on, and there's no way to stop it once you do it. So I'm just letting you know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mike Devine, Oak Parkway.
Mike, do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. Just two points. The first is, and I became aware of information which I can't defend, it's secondhand, but perhaps Catherine knows if it's accurate or not, traffic is a continuing concern of mine, especially in this area. Evidently, this type of use, veterinary hospital, for lack of a better word, is a fairly high generator of traffic. Just something to bear in mind. The second is a process question. We all know that a dispute of jurisdiction between zoning board and planning board caused a great amount of uproar in town, and continues to this day. It looks like we have at least three different views among the professionals here. This has nothing to do with this gentleman's qualifications or the desire to have such a hospital. I have pets, I've always had them, I'd love to have this capability in town. Question is, is this the best location? I would think that, I think I heard you say, now that it's brought into focus, we need to really reconsider and think carefully about this. Don't, let me misquote you. Your opinion is, and it's pretty specific, and, and, it's the right word, specialist language, kind of follow what you said, I kind of follow what Anon said, if we've got three experts with not exactly compatible opinions, it seems to me that should be considered further. But my overall point is, I'd like to see us at the front end of any application process, if there's any possibility of a jurisdictional debate, couldn't we make that part of the systematic process, how we treat incoming applications? Perhaps it is, I don't know, but it'd be nice to avoid this kind of thing, because you know what the last one caused, I'm not taking sides, but it'd be nice to avoid that kind of conflict. Thanks.
Thank you.
Adrian Mierman, twelve Brook Drive.
Would you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony about to be, about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I have some questions about the lighting and the landscaping before, but made no comments. I would like to now make some comments on the same. First about the lighting, Mr. Dax mentioned there will be three very tall light poles to illuminate the parking area, and that is then consistent with the kind of lighting in adjacent properties in that same economic development zone. That kind of lighting is very impersonal, and people who drive to their own homes along their road will essentially drive through a very industrial-looking type of lighting pattern on their way home. Mr. Dax mentioned that he thinks three larger lights are more in keeping with the overall design of that whole area than a larger number of smaller lights, but I would say, looking at the rendering and looking how pleasant those two lampposts look in front of the building, even though they were just decorative for the rendering. Lower lights, more numerous, but lower lights will illuminate a parking lot just as nicely and will not be visible from the road as such harsh, harsh light. Just because it already exists in other properties doesn't mean that this one has to conform to the previous practice of just blasting a parking lot with light from a very, very high vantage point that is going to throw light way beyond the immediate area to be lit. I mean, light scatters, that's just a fact. Also, because there are tall trees between the building and Route 15, three maple trees, it creates its own world that can have a more country or rural look once you arrive at your destination, as opposed to arriving at an impersonal big parking lot lit up by light that can illuminate a factory. So that is, I think, my concern in general, is that people treat light very indifferently, as if light is by definition a good thing, even in a rural area like ours, where we have grown up looking up in the sky and seeing the stars, as opposed to looking up and seeing that type of lights. So it's true for this application, I would like to say, get lower lights, and maybe the neighboring properties will think that's a good idea also, and improve the overall appearance of the area over the years. My second point is about, actually, a question by Mrs. Ebbinghausen about whether there was any kind of pedestrian or bicycle trails, paths included in this development, and the answer was no. I would like to just bring to this board an awareness that with the North Village being so close by, and there being just a logistical possibility for people to walk from one to the other as they need it, or use a bicycle or an e-bike, that in any given application, the planning board includes a certain right-of-way for either present or future use of sidewalks or bicycle paths to connect the various living areas of Sparta. This may be, on the surface, an unlikely location, being that it's along a busy Route 15, but as I said, it's only half a mile away from the North Village, which is a residential neighborhood. And so, in general, if we perhaps aspire to build a bicycle network, a pedestrian network in Sparta, which can be done incrementally, we had a few months ago, a Highlands representative who mentioned that funds are available to develop this even incrementally, then we look at the future as a Sparta that is not just car-dependent, as a default way of thinking, but that it allows us to diversify the way we interact with the various neighborhoods. And just to look at a plan and say, where is your right-of-way, and build it slowly with adjacent properties, it may take 20, 30, 40 years, but then we're doing it for the next generation. So that is something that I hope will still enter this application or any future applications. And those were my two areas of comment. Thank you.
Chairwoman Luciana, I just wanted to say, I think that the second comment about pedestrian connectivity is very important. There are opportunities, if the township wants to, in the future, make that a priority. You know, I've worked with other municipalities that have adopted, the legislative body has adopted a complete streets policy, that's generally what it's called, in that it's usually a resolution, and, you know, every planning board application, the resolution essentially sets forth that every, every application, whether it's residential or non-residential, will assess the, you know, viability, safety of incorporating a sidewalk design into the plan. So if, in the future, I think maybe the governing body could, could think about that.
Thank you. So from where I sit, it seems that we have two motions in front of us, potentially one, well, actually, definitely one, potentially two. The first motion should be surrounding whether or not this board has the jurisdiction to continue to, to move on this particular application.
And Madam Chair, a lot of, three of us have addressed that, or more than three of us, Mr. McBreyer hasn't addressed it, on behalf of the applicant, I think we should give him an opportunity.
Absolutely.
He doesn't have to reveal himself of it, but I think we should give it to him.
I appreciate that, and my comments are brief.
Thank you, Ms. Brady.
I think the planner, the township's planner provided a very thorough and well-reasoned analysis and guidance, not only at the initial meeting, but also tonight, addressing that very issue. We agree with the township's expert that this is a permitted use in the zone. We respectfully disagree with Mr. Dash's position and join and support of the determination of this board, insofar that we believe it does indeed have jurisdiction to hear and decide this matter.
Okay.
Well, I think we need some conversation amongst the board. I can start. So on the jurisdiction, definitely we need to decide jurisdiction.
We definitely, yes, exactly, that's why.
So I'm going to, let me share my thoughts, they're in a couple chapters here.
Are we going to close out the public comments?
Yeah.
But I do want to just respond to the lighting conversation.
Okay.
Okay.
And is there any other alternative lighting solutions based on the public's concerns or comments that you've heard that we can consider and/or make a conditional if the board decides that it wants to proceed and move forward with this, to give that, to give that some consideration? I think the gentleman's point was well-taken, to keep the consistency, the warmness of the site, not have it, you know, bled out or stark from the 25-foot-plus lampposts.
Yeah, if that was the way the board wanted to see it, I mean, that's not a deal breaker for us. I would say that lower lights, closer together, create a lot of spotlighting on the ground. It's not, we don't take lighting lightly, and when you drive down the street.
But there's balance.
There's definitely a balance.
The concern is, it's going to choke out everything else, bright, overpowering, I get it. You're a professional, as far as, you know, working with your team to take those comments into consideration and.
Yeah, we certainly can, if that's the issue. I still feel the way we designed it is a better option, and will actually disappear into the landscape and create a more ambient light than what he's speaking of.
Okay.
Okay, so discussion around the jurisdiction.
Sure. So, warning, I'm not going to end with my conclusion yet, what I think. So what I've heard, and thank you, I respect Mr. Dash, our professionals for sharing their views, kind of what I heard, what I'm seeing this as, is first, professional offices are obviously a permitted use. In the definition of professional office, it's members of a recognized profession, they give many examples of similar professionals, and they talk about doctors and dentists. So, okay, part one, to me, this seems like standard veterinary care is a related or similar professional. But are animal hospitals and urgent cares different than straight vet services? And does that make a difference here? Animal hospitals are described under conditional uses in our general code, from what I heard, but they're not specifically mentioned in the ED zone. So, as either permitted or conditional, and if it's neither of those, it's prohibited. So then, what do we assume, right? That's what we have to decide, is what do we assume that was left out by design? That it was known it could be a conditional use, but it was not specifically mentioned when it could have been in the ED zone? Or does it just fall under a professional use, and we're assuming that animal hospitals and urgent cares are not any different than standard vet services, and that it should be included? So I'll end it there, but that's kind of where I'm stuck right now, is that's how I perceived what I've heard.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with that. The sticking point is included but not limited to, right? So that's where the ambiguity comes in, when it comes to the ordinance and how it's worded. And that's why we are where we are. Now, when things are open to interpretation, obviously, we have Mr. Dash's opinion, Mr. Scott's opinion, Mr. Ma's opinion, and Mr. Brady's opinion. So that's, when we have this space, you know, the question to us also needs to be, do we trust our process? Do we trust our professionals to provide us with adequate data? And do we, given the information that we have, have faith that any decision we make from here on out, you know, is the right thing to do? We're at a point where we need a best-case scenario solution, okay? Not a. Not an emotional one, not a right or wrong one. We need to decide where we feel comfortable in terms of the information we've been provided, and what direction we want to go as a board. So, I think when we're dealing with ambiguity, and we're dealing with, you know, opinions, because that's really what we're dealing with, is opinions, our own are just as important. So when we think about this, that's what we need to consider. Any other commentary from the DAs?
Okay, I think we're going to craft a motion to determine jurisdiction.
A motion to either continue to retain jurisdiction, or to find that, in fact, you don't have jurisdiction, because it's not a permitted use.
Which one? If we do a motion to.
Right, we're relying on you for wording.
Yeah, well, it's the intention of the board to retain the jurisdiction here?
Well, I think that would be determined in the vote.
Motion, in that case, would be that I make a motion that the board find that this is a permitted use under the section cited by Catherine, and that the board has jurisdiction. The alternative motion, if the board would want to decline, is make a motion to decline jurisdiction because we find that the applicant's use is not permitted in the zone.
Motion?
Yeah, we're making one motion right now, for determination, I believe, as to whether or not we're keeping jurisdiction. Does that make sense to everyone? So we know what we're voting on?
Yes, that we are keeping it.
Yes, that we are keeping jurisdiction. So if somebody would.
Make a motion that we retain our jurisdiction.
I'll second it.
Okay, so roll call, please.
Councilman Dean Blumetti.
Yes.
Jeanette Burke.
Yes.
Christine Dunbar.
Yes.
Bill Enright.
Yes.
Justin Canales.
Yes.
Angela Cassie.
Yes.
Chairwoman Celeste Luciano.
Yes.
Ernest Ragstad.
Yes.
Mike Sylvester.
Yes.
Okay, given that information, we have another motion that's about to be made.
We have some final comments.
Again, though, Madam Chair, I would say that, I don't know that Mr. McBreyer wants to have some final closing words.
That's, actually, to Mr. Councilman Blumetti's point, he just asked for closing statements as well.
Would we go first, or let the?
Actually.
Go first?
Would you prefer to go first, Councilman Blumetti?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, sure. That way they can address questions that we all might have, too.
Sure.
So, I've been struggling with this, and, you know, ever since we had the first hearing. And when I look at that intersection, I've driven by it a number of times, it's green on all four corners. So, it looks, to me, it looks appropriate for Sparta and for Sussex County. I looked at the aerial view maps many times, and until you get to North Village, for the first quarter-mile of a radius, or third of a mile, it's open views, mainly vegetation, no development except for the small house, and of course, the church in the far back. So to me, I still see that, even though there's some progress, some development, some, there's lights and there's traffic, of course, there's still the aesthetics, that rural character is still there, to me. You know, when I see that, and I think of, you know, the attributes, you know, it's the streetscape, there's still the aesthetics, the vegetation. And now, the proposal is to put something right on that corner, where right now, there's still an open corner. To me, I worry is that gonna lead to the other three corners? And, you know, when I think of positive criteria and negative criteria, benefits versus detriments or negatives to the public good, you know, I do think about those attributes. And I still wonder, I still haven't heard that there is a possibility of a smaller footprint there, or how the changes that this would bring along would not create a negative impact on people driving through there, people living around there, people seeing that Sparta intersection. Granted, up the street, a little bit more, there's a, you know, a big, huge development. But right now, that intersection is still green, it's still open, it's still space, there's still vegetation there. So, that's kind of, you know, I haven't heard, despite the well-intentions, extremely well-intentions of the applicant, and all the thought that went into this, and the designs, and I'm not denying that there, you know, he would do a wonderful job, and it's nothing personal. I still haven't been convinced or heard where these changes would outweigh what we have there now, and what benefit that provides. That's my current thinking on this.
So, in closing, I think we had our professional planner spend some considerable testimony explaining the justifications for the variances. The applicant and its professionals have worked extremely hard and diligently on this application to present to this board the best, would it believe, possible plan for this parcel, given its genesis of formation, given some of the existing constraints. And we've heard testimony from the doctor himself about the highest caliber of services that he can provide to the residents of Sparta. We rely and rest on the testimony that has been presented. We thank this board for its time and diligent consideration. And we look favorably toward its decision. So thank you.
I think we're ready for a motion.
I just would like to make a comment. I'd like us all to consider what is happening here. Along that strip, on top of fragile Highlands environment, we are creating, and continue to create, a concrete jungle with runoff that is going right into those tributaries. Maybe it's only 20%, but still, that is happening. Is this really what we want to continue to do by granting variances? Really? Do we really want to do this? That beautiful building and service, wonderful service that it's going to provide is too big for that parcel. Look at the variances that are required.
And, but, to your point, and I'm not disagreeing with you, we've asked our engineer whether or not there are any additional concerns that he's had with the testimony that's been given. He said no. His concerns were addressed. We've asked our planner whether or not she has any additional concerns based on the testimony that's been provided. She said no. So at some point, we have to rely on the information that we're being given. And I'm not saying you're wrong. I'm not, 100% not, because I agree with you. You and I have had conversations about water quality, and runoff, and, you know, impervious coverage. We both, I think, agree and are like-minded in a great many areas there. But in saying that, and just, you know, counterpoint to what you're saying, so that when we're thinking about this, we're thinking about it holistically, we are not the experts, I mean, I know I'm not. You may be far more than I am, because I'm not. So I have to rely on the additional information that I'm getting, and the additional inputs, to say, "Okay, what's safe, what's not safe? You know, where are we gonna fall on the subject?" So I have to, at some point, put all of that information together so that I can make an informed decision. So I definitely understand where you're coming from, because, like I said, we've had this conversation offline many times, and I think we agree a lot on certain areas. And yes, and I appreciate that you're bringing that to light, because the public does need to hear that we are considering all of these things, that these are cautionary tales, and that when we do do something, and we do consider a variance, we don't consider it lightly, right? Because I know some people were considering that, or were speaking to, to variances just kind of coming up, and being granted, so on and so forth. We don't consider these things lightly. I know, from my own personal experience, I agonize for hours over every application that comes in the door. And I'm a volunteer. I have a day job. I don't want to be here until 12:30 at night, either. But unfortunately, here we are. And the reason why we do this is because we want to give everything we have to the applicants. We want to give everything we have to the public. We want to do everything we can to serve the needs. That's where we're coming from. And I think that's a good place, right?
I just want to echo Ms. Dunbar's comment, not necessarily about the technical aspects of stormwater and the environment. And I agree with you, Chairwoman, in terms of that, technically, we've asked our professionals for, have they been satisfied that their requests and things have been met? In my mind, though, that's totally separate from the fact that there's a bunch of variances that are there for good reasons, that this would, despite opinions about the building, whether it's beautiful, whether it's modern, contemporary, the inside, and the services obviously sound wonderful, it being so close to the road, it having the parking in the front, all these variances to what is established is a separate, in my mind, a separate conversation from the stormwater management system working properly now, or not now, working, being designed properly. It's still, the benefit, cost-benefit analysis.
Yep.
The positive and negative criteria for the variances, does it outweigh?
I only use that as a platform, in the sense that when we think about these things, we think about all of these things. We spend a lot of time, and I only continued on the variances because someone from the public stood up and specifically spoke to that. So I wanted to kind of, you know, throw that out there as well, that we contemplate these things on a very deep level, and I know you do.
Don't ask me, tell us up who was.
And Madam Chair, I know impervious coverage seems to be a hot-button topic, but there is no variance being requested. The site complies with the township's requirements, as well as the building coverage.
So are we ready for a motion?
Yes.
No.
Okay, so I think we're ready for a motion, and I'm relying on you for language, please.
Well, the motion can either be to approve, in which case, the motion is to approve the application submitted by the applicant, and I assume with conditions. I've made a long list of conditions. If anybody makes the motion, I can go through those. If the intention of the board or the movement is to deny, then the motion is to deny the application submitted by the applicant.
So I think we're gonna try to stick with the positive aspects. So the motion would be to approve, and then we'll rely on you to list the conditions.
I will make the motion to approve the application, and will now.
Subject to the conditions.
Subject to the conditions.
I'll tell you what, I'll go through the ones that I've made. My method is to put a star next to things, as I.
We need a second.
Oh, I'll circle.
Okay, the, I have a note that the the second-floor operation with the dog training, or whatever, or rehabilitation will be handled by the same entity, which I think is important in terms of, you know, not adding the parking, because of administrative staff, everybody is there to begin with. Beyond that, tonight, they're going to work with Mr. Simmons to reduce the level of light under the canopy. On the generator, they'll meet the township requirements on noise, hours of operation, et cetera. There'll be a change to the plans, to make sure the plans are accurate with regard to the percentage of the parking lot area. It's not 10%, it's closer to 20%. Size and material for the water service is gonna be reviewed by the township and the MUA. There's a list of items in Dave's November 21st, '23 report that they indicated they would comply with. I'll flip to that in a minute. And I had a note here that Mr. Dyxer had said, if the board wants lower lights and more lights, they would work with the board, I assume, with Mr. Simmons and/or Catherine. But I'm not sure where the board wants to go in that regard, so that might be.
I would like to recommend, based on our previous discussion, that upon Mr. Simmons' approval, that if there's other alternatives or solutions, that you would consider doing that.
Okay, so I'll include that as one of the conditions. Dave's report had some corrections that they'll do, I'm sure, correcting the zoning chart, where they had either a typo or miscalculation. Dave's report says the hours of operation for the proposed parking lot lighting will be shown, and I think the stipulation was it would go to 50% for all the lights, except for the entrance lights at 9 o'clock, an hour after they close. I'm not sure if they've designed this yet, but Dave's report said there'll be additional planting around the parking lot to buffer it from Route 15, and some evergreen shrubs north of the parking lot. Dave's report also indicates plants should be 8 to 10 foot tall at the rear of the building. Fire protection system has to be reviewed by the fire department and the fire sub-cold official. The gate valve has to be added by the proposed water service tie-in. There's a discrepancy regarding reinforced concrete pipe that needs to be resolved somewhere on the plan. The maintenance manual for the stormwater basin has to be approved by Dave and myself, and recorded in the chain of title. There's a change that has to be made in Dave's report regarding a minimum slope on a pipe. See, size of the water service has to be looked at by the fire sub-cold official, the fire department, and the water department. And an as-built plan has to be prepared upon the completion of the project. And obviously, there's some outside agency approvals that are needed, like Sussex County Health Department for the septic, et cetera, and we always just wrap those in.
Correct.
I have one more. The response letter from the applicant's engineer provided that the loading space would be moved up eight feet away from the refuse enclosure.
Eight feet, you said, Catherine?
And I don't know if the dimming of lights after hours, an hour after closing business.
Yeah, he did, he did say that.
I have that.
Yes.
Thank you.
You said 9 o'clock, but what I'll probably just say is an hour after closing.
Hour after closing.
Also, separate from that, was the parking lot lights would go off. That was as planned, right? I think that was in the document.
50% dimming other than the emergency exits, correct?
Yeah, other than the exit way, the entrance exit.
Was that the parking lot or the building?
Building was off, other than the doors, and then the parking lot lights went to 50%.
Also, there's the, obviously, the water department approval, did you mention?
I have that.
We're ready for a vote. I think that was all the conditions that we had so far. Resolution will list everything else, and we're ready for a vote.
Councilman Dean Blumetti.
No.
Jeanette Burke.
Yes.
Christine Dunbar.
No.
Bill Enright.
Yes.
Justin Canales.
Yes.
Angela Cassie.
Yes.
Chairwoman Celeste Luciano.
Yes.
Ernest Ragstad.
Yes.
Mike Sylvester.
We thank you for your time, and wish you a very safe and great holiday season. Thank you very much.
We're going to take a brief recess. Yeah, be careful. We're gonna take a brief recess. Please, let's be back by 9:20. We're back online. Okay. We've returned from our recess. We're now moving to the hearing for application PB number 708 Plus Holdings LLC, 53A Sparta Avenue, Block 5019, Lot 23, site plan. Before we move into this, I, I have a question, Mr. Collins, regarding the letter that we received for Captiva for the extension of their original, um, their original approval from 2020, and I'd like to understand how that relates to this open application.
So I recommend that we just hold on that, and that's a, an request by the property owner for an extension of the prior approval obtained by the prior contract purchaser, Captiva. That's for more, more apartments on the site than this application. So why don't we, I recommend that we just consider that as part of this application, let the applicant present their case and decide this case first, and then decide whether you're granting any extension or not.
Okay.
Which may not be needed because it may be that this replaces that one. So.
Okay.
Whether you're in a discretion to wait, no deadline on the extension request. If you grant it, it'll relay back to the date that it was extended to. And without much further, we can go ahead and start this case.
Can I ask a clarifying question? So I'm a little confused. I, I thought there was a three-year maximum in terms of the extension period from the original resolution.
No, the way, the way it works is there's, it's a municipal land use law, the final site plan approval gets two years of protection, and then there are three one-year extensions that can be granted for a final. There's also another one called governmental approvals extension that's separate. None of that is really important right now because if you defer on the subject, so the guess is someone can request more extensions, and including on that site, that prior site plan and the statutory protection period is what is extended, not the approval. So.
So Tom, just to be clear, you're saying we should proceed with the application and hear it, and then decide whether we want to grant an extension.
That's what I'm.
To get approval.
That's what I'm suggesting, and that's my position.
And in your professional judgment, there's no conflict of interest in that right now as we stand with the approval in place?
No, there's no, there's no, it doesn't matter, right?
Just for another clarification, the, the letter that we received to extend their deadline is a different proposal for the same site.
Yes, that's right. They'll probably tell you about that prior proposal in this application. Okay. That was, I think, 70 units, more units on the same property, different parking arrangement under, underbuilding parking and higher height. So it is, it is a different approval. It's, this application is actually asking for a wholly new application, so.
The fact that that was approved was brought up a lot in the paperwork, but it's relevant from our standpoint for now.
Well, let them explain what, how they think it's relevant. That's, you know, you'll, it's not going to be an automatic that, because they are a different application, but there was a prior approval, and that's relevant. It's just not binding.
I think, given the fact that it's almost 9:30, we should probably proceed.
Right. So we swear in any, the first witness of the applicant, please, sir, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth so help you God?
I do.
And please state your name and address.
My name is Albert Dottoli. It's D as in David, A, T as in Thomas, T as in Thomas, O L I. My address is 70 Chestnut Ridge Road, Montvale, New Jersey.
Thank you, Mr. Dottoli. And, Mr. Dottoli, well, I'll let your attorney ask you any qualifications the board has. I don't believe the board has ever accepted your qualifications, so please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. If I may, just for the record, I'm Brian Shkaski, Cleary Jacoby Alfieri and Jacobs on behalf of the applicant Plus Holdings. Perhaps I could outline why we're here and what happened before. Plus Holdings is the contract purchaser of this property contingent upon obtaining the approvals here. So this is 53A Sparta Avenue. It's in the TCC Town Center Commercial District. We have an application for preliminary and final site plan approval. No variances are required. There are some waivers that we will identify when we reach the engineering testimony. Our application tonight is for 40 multifamily units, including six affordable, those affordable breakdown would be one-one bedroom, three, two bedrooms, and two-three bedroom. So the total number of units, as I said, were 40. We have seven one bedrooms, 31 two bedrooms, and two three bedrooms. We have 72 parking spaces, which take into consideration electric vehicle parking spaces that we have to do under the current law. We were previously approved, or this site was previously approved for 70 units. That resolution was adopted December 16th on 2020. One of the waivers we are requesting was a waiver granted by the board with respect to that application, and that was for loading zones. The code requires four in the design standards. We are providing one for a building this size. You'll hear testimony that, that zero or one would be appropriate. We also submitted revised drawings in response to the various reports we've received. Those were submitted on November 29th, 2023, and we also provided the response to the engineering report directly from our engineering consultant, Burton Engineering. We did provide our affidavit of service and proof of publication to Ms. Fox. I also had the opportunity to speak to Mr. Simmons. We've confirmed that the taxes were paid, and I indicated that in light of some of the questions that were raised, I would provide the easements for the access driveway that exists. So since it's late, we decided that we would start with Mr. Dottoli and hopefully finish his testimony, and then come back on January 17th with the board's permission. Mr. Dottoli, you can tell the board, give the board the benefit of, and you might as well sit down because I think the mic will pick us up better, the benefit of your education and experience, please.
I have a degree from Virginia Tech, which was confirmed in 1976. I have been in practice for myself since 1981. I have testified all around the state of New Jersey. I'm also licensed in the state of New York. I am an architect of kind of general practice. I do residential, multifamily residential. I've done municipal buildings, police headquarters, libraries. Over the past 42 years, there's, except for very specialized buildings, I've done just about any kind of buildings.
Madam Chair, I would submit Mr. Dottoli as an expert in the field of architecture.
Excuse me. Yes.
The board will accept his qualifications as a registered architect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, having not been before this board in about 20 years, I'm not sure your procedure. These are the drawings that were part of the application. Would you like them marked?
No, if they were submitted, if they're submitted drawings, don't mark them. But if anything that's been colorized or changed or you're going to change tonight, we'll mark it, okay?
Thank you. Mr. Dottoli, you have up on your easel a set of drawings that you've prepared, correct?
That is correct.
Why don't you walk us through your drawings and just identify each sheet by the date it was prepared and any revision date?
Yes. All right. The first page, A, one of four, is the building elevations. It was initially created on July 19th of 2023, and the latest revision for this page is 10/23/2023. The rear and side elevations were added to the sheet. Initially, we only had the front elevation.
So why don't you tell us about those elevations? How high is the building, and what is the distance between each floor?
Sure. Well, again, the building is 40 units, four floors. The height from the first floor to the highest point of the, of a parapet is 47 feet, two and a half inches. The, our engineer will testify to the building height as defined by the, by the ordinance, but it's well within the 62 feet that I believe is permitted by the ordinance. We are proposing a mix of units, seven one-bedroom units, 31 two-bedroom units, and two three-bedroom units. 40 units in total, 15% are affordable housing, and as per the New Jersey requirements, we have three two bedrooms, two three bedrooms, and one one bed, one one-bedroom unit.
I think you misspoke, Al, just so that I'm clear, there is one one-bedroom.
One one-bedroom.
Three two-bedroom affordable.
Yes.
And two three-bedroom.
Yes, I'm sorry if I misspoke. Four floors, 10 units per floor. The footprint of the building measures, the overall dimensions are 231 feet, 2 inches across by 64 feet, 8 inches deep. The building footprints includes patios and balconies. Each floor is, including the balconies and patios, each floor is 13,426 square feet. The building will be fully sprinkled. The one-bedroom units are 730 square feet. The two-bedroom units are, they range from 973 square feet to 1,057 square feet. And the three-bedroom units are 1,314 square feet. These are very comfortable square footages for each of the unit types. The second, third, and fourth floor units all have balconies. The first floor unit has patios outside underneath the balcony element. The, the building exterior, we are proposing a brick at the base of the building and then stucco up above. We have, again, balconies, so we will have railings, sliding glass doors onto those balconies. We have a fair amount of window in each room, so we have a nice bright interior in all of these units. We have exercise room on the second floor. We have a package room on the first floor for delivery of packages, and we have storage closets that are available to tenants for a fee located on the third and fourth floors. That's pretty much a recap of the building itself.
So you've identified the area on the facade that would be either brick or the stucco finish, correct?
That is correct.
And it's my understanding, well, why don't you describe to the board what the colors will be?
We want to be in the gray family of colors. The brick will be a bit of a darker shade and the stucco will be a lighter gray color. So we'll have some contrasting colors. We'll probably go with black railings and black window frames.
In addition, you testified that there's an exercise room on the second floor that is available for all unit owners, correct?
That is correct.
And this comes up all the time when I do multifamily. That exercise room is limited to the residents of the facility.
That is correct.
All right. In addition, we received a few reports, one from Mr. Simmons and one from Ms. Somad, if I'm saying her name correctly. If we go through Mr. Simmons' report regarding architecture, let's try to address some of those comments.
Actually, I have a quick question. These dwellings are, are these rentals or are these for purchase?
These will be rental, rental units.
100%?
100% rental? The first comment on the, I guess, the planner, the engineer's letter, the HVAC units, page A4 shows the rooftop of the building. And we will have these groupings of four AC units. These are small units. They measure roughly 12 inches deep, 37 inches wide, and about 39 inches high. So they, each, each unit will have its own rooftop unit. They are surprisingly quiet. I've used these on other buildings. I've been on the rooftop and I can even tell you how surprisingly quiet they run. They will comply with any noise requirements that will be imposed on this building.
Okay. The second comment dealt with respect to the emergency generator and noise level. Could you please provide the board with your experience with generator and the generator and noise attenuation aspects?
Yes. The generator will have a specialized housing to reduce the noise limit of the generator to the requirements of the town. It will comply with the requirements of the town.
And you've testified as to the remaining comments regarding the exercise room, the storage closets, and the materials.
Yes.
Ms. Somad's report. You know, we spoke about the affordable housing. And whether these are appropriate for you or from, for the principal is, one of the questions was, is that the operation and maintenance of the common areas, could you discuss that?
I'll leave that to the building operator.
Okay. And the outdoor we'll deal with. We discussed the materials, the rest, and that's, that's about it. That's all I have for Mr. DiToli. Just, just to clarify, when was the last survey done? We updated the survey and provided that in November, so it was updated, I believe, as of November 23, but if you bear with me one minute, I will give you. And who performed it? Was it your firm?
No. No, I'm an architect. I'm not licensed to survey.
Any other questions from the Dais?
Yes. Unless I'm mistaken, I haven't seen visuals, mockups, any kind of imagery of what the building would look like. Am I missing that or are they not provided?
We, we did not provide that yet, Councilman. We will provide that at the next meeting.
Okay.
You're talking about a colorized rendering?
Yeah. Yeah, that's really important.
Sure.
Is it preliminary? No, we're here for preliminary and final site plan approval. If I could go back to Mr. Sylvester's question, the Dykstra Group did update the survey. We provided that, and that was updated as of November 7th of this year.
Also, I know our, our planner in her report on page 12, number six, asked about the building materials, same standards for all facades and elevations at all four sides. Is that something that you're planning to do and show us?
Yes. Again, we have a front elevation here. The east elevation is the front. The west elevation is the rear elevation. And then we have the two side elevations, north and south. And again, brick at the base of the building up to the, essentially up to the windowsill of the second floor windows, and from there up, stucco, a stucco finish.
Okay. So I, yeah, again, I go back to my first comment. I think it'll be much more valuable for all of us once we see the renderings.
Right.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if it's a question for the architect or for a different witness, but I've raised a question related to, a lot of the standards fall under the incentive ordinance, and I know there's a little bit of back and forth as far as, you know, if you have four stories and the coverage. The, my question was really related to under 8.5, 0.1, 0.1C, Roman numeral or little I too. The maximum coverage for a four-story building shall be 80%, with the condition that 15% of the total units in any four-story building shall be for sale. I realize that the coverage is under 80%, so this is why it's a little bit confusing. But I was just curious if the entirety of the building is, is recommended to be, or is proposed to be a rental building, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, my understanding is you have to do the six, 15% or six units as for-sale units for this coverage. So they have to revise the plans to incorporate six for-sale units into this drawing.
That's the important.
That's in order to take advantage of the ordinance incentives, you, you must have a 15% or six for-sale units.
The way I read the ordinance is that, and also the affordable housing ordinance is the 15% would be designated for affordable housing and not as for-sale units.
That's two separate things. There's two requirements.
Yep, there's.
It's an incentive to do, an incentive zoning that allows you to do the higher coverage and the higher height, provided you have 15% affordable. You do have that at six units and separately requires you to have six units or, if it was more, 15% for sale. So that means you got, you're going to have to make arrangements for six of the units. They don't have to be, they don't, they shouldn't be the affordable, but they should be marked and they would have to be for sale. And if you're deviating from that, you need a variance, but it would be best to just comply with it. The prior application complied with that.
I think we can comply.
I think you can.
Does that mean that 12 units would be for sale, six would be affordable housing?
It's a double requirement. One, one requirement is that they, there'd be six, six units in this, in this number, 40, 15% of six, 15% of 40 is six affordable units, and they have to be rental because the project is generally speaking rental. In addition to that, 15% of the units or six units in this particular design have to be sold.
Okay.
Concept being, I think, that the governing body had was to try to make an opportunity for some, for sale units, particularly empty nesters who might want to sell a house and then buy a condo. That's, that's a requirement if someone goes to the 80% coverage and the higher height.
Tom, my question, I guess she, amongst us, is that they proposed a coverage that's less than 80%.
I know they proposed a cover, but it's very close to it, right? It's at 60.
60%.
And it's more than the, the standard coverage of the zone, which is 40%.
Yes.
So that's the incentive.
That's what triggers it. I just wanted to make sure that.
Going above the standard coverage triggers the incentive and allows the incentive. There's also a requirement, I think, that the applicant should look into this, that the definition of multifamily building includes underground or underbuilding parking. You don't want to do it in this plan, and I understand that, but technically that's a deviation from the definition of multifamily unit and at least a design standard is probably a C variance. But it makes some sense because you're, in your plan, you're proposing to do all at-grade parking, meaning the building doesn't have to be higher to have building underneath the living floors, which keeps the height at the 47 feet instead of the 60 or whatever the allowance is. So you're, you need to request relief from that, but your reasoning might be very helpful.
Can I get some clarification? I'm just looking at Burton Engineering, C1.1, the aerial map in the upper left corner. The boundaries are showing two sites. It says site, but there's two sites outlined up here. We're talking, we're talking specifically about one lot and block, correct? One lot and block, and it is the lot and block in which the word site appear.
But they have a grading easement on the adjacent lot, and they're proposing in their site plans to take advantage of that grading easement. As you see, that's on the adjacent lot.
The other property for grading purposes?
Yes. Their engineer will probably be explaining all this, but the architect is doing, the architect.
If you look at where it's, if you have the colored version, it says site 23 in the center, and then there's lot two next to it, that's where the grading easement is. I'm looking at this.
Oh.
Yes. All right. Mine's in color. Mine's not colored.
But the engineer will explain.
Yeah, I'm just wanting my own clarification. Thank you.
The other thing I'd suggest the architect and the attorney do is look at the Town Center Design Standard requirements in the Town Center Commercial Zone and be prepared to explain how this particular design conforms with the design standard requirements of the ordinance. It's fairly, very, it's fairly focused on having residential appearance, having neutral colors, having compatibility with the surrounding uses and properties, and basically a Town Center design and look. And I'd have to say to you that I'm not sure that building does the things that are expected, so. Might, might be some bells and whistles and some architectural features you could add and some color consideration you could give.
I have a, I have a question regarding the six for-sale apartments. Is there a mix of, you know, what they have to be, you know, do they have to be the three bed, there's no, they could be all one bedroom, for example?
That's, that's correct.
Okay.
Low and moderate has the bedroom mix requirement because COA's rules have a bedroom mix requirement.
Okay. And the same is true for the affordable housing rental units?
That's what I was talking about. The bedroom mix that they talked about is required because our ordinance requires it and our ordinance requires it because COA requires it in the rules of COA for what a bedroom mix shall be. It is, it requires a certain percentage, they seem to have it right, a certain maximum percentage of one bedroom and a minimum percentage, I think, of three bedroom, which results in an effective two-bedroom.
Okay, so there's a formality of some sort.
It's 20%, no more than 20% one-bedroom affordable units, no, no less than 30% two-bedroom affordable units, and no less than 20% three-bedroom, and then you can make up, you know, the difference with twos or threes.
Either one, okay.
So there's one, two minimums and one maximum.
Got it. Thank you.
Mr. DiToli, are you, are you testifying around lighting or around signs? Or is that somebody else? Okay.
That will be our engineer, Councilman.
Okay.
Are there any dedicated, like, outdoor common areas?
There's an amenity area that the engineer will also testify to.
Oh, I guess I should get into that, too. Technically, the definition of multifamily says that there'll be common elements, and it lists them as mandatory elements. You, you have the exercise room, but you seem to be missing a common element terrace. That's one of the definitions of multifamily. Now, you might be able to do that on a rooftop, you might be able to do that on adjacent to the building or near the building on the ground, but you'd have to satisfy the board that you're providing a common terrace area.
Common terrace as part of the building itself?
It says, it says, it says, it says as part of the building for a multifamily building to be, to meet the definition, doesn't it? It's, if you read the definition, it says terraces, terrace in the list.
Yes, but it also includes indoor and outdoor passive and/or two-active recreational areas, so.
Yeah, you need those.
There are things outside of building that are included there, so I, I don't necessarily think it's limited to the, inside the building or attached to the building.
Yeah, I didn't mean to say that it was limited. I think it could be outside.
We do have common lobby areas where there could be seating inside the building. That's why I ask.
Yeah, that, that's good, but you need to look at that definition of, these are like minimum common elements, and so they're associated with the building. They don't, some of them have to be in the building, some of them have to be associated with it. But like, somebody's private patio, which I think is a great idea for the first floor units, that technically is not a common element terrace. Whereas if you had an outdoor recreation area that had a patio or a terrace that was open to all the members, all the residents, occupants, that would seem to meet that, okay? Or if you had a rooftop, I believe the last plan had a rooftop terrace, and that met the definition of a terrace that was open to the members of the apartments, the occupants of the building.
Just so the board is clear about what the discussion is, there's, in the incentive ordinance, the definition for apartment slash multifamily unit building. ordinance, the definition for apartment/multifamily unit building, it says shall mean a building or buildings containing a minimum of 10 or more for sale or rental dwelling units together with common elements, which is what Tom is bringing up, including but not limited to community rooms, exercise facilities, terraces, pergolas, indoor and outdoor passive indoor active two recreational areas, surface parking, structured and underground garage parking and related improvements. So it's intended to capture that the apartment use also has to include some of these amenity, onsite amenities, indoor and outdoor. Tom had previously brought up that, you know, the underground parking may be something that they have to seek a waiver from pursuant to the definition because it is kind of looped under there as well. But that's what the discussion is about.
Tom, the terrace point as a common outdoor area, as a balcony, a private outdoor area?
No, I didn't mean to, it is confusing. All that we're focused on this terrace right now is that there, the definition of multifamily building requires a series of common elements, and one of them is a terrace. And so if someone has a patio on their unit, that's not common. That's theirs. And that is a terrace or patio, but it's not a common element terrace. One suggestion would be if you're having an outdoor recreation area, barbecue location, picnic area, you call that your common area terrace. Another suggestion is, what about a rooftop terrace? I'm not trying to say you shall do it. I don't care. I just think you need to address how you're meeting the definition of multifamily building, which you're close, but these are a few issues that should be like looked at before the next meeting. And I really think, look at the Town Center Design Standards for compatibility because I'm not sure you're in the right ballpark with this design. But that's my view, and I'm not the board, so.
So that the board is aware, we do have the outdoor amenity area, which has the fire pit, the barbecue, the patio, and the like.
That sounds like a terrace that is common, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. Are we going to be hearing from the building manager?
Not tonight.
Tonight? Not tonight?
Not tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
We're almost done for tonight.
Yeah, we're.
We would save you some time and just start with the architect and work our way through.
I'll request maybe some color renderings.
Yes, we will provide a color rendering at the next hearing.
Tom, just one clarification on the six for sale units. Are there any restrictions on someone or a company coming in and buying those six units and then renting them out?
No, in the law, you can rent out a unit. Even if someone owns a unit, you can always rent it. But the whole idea of that was to try to get, the township and the planning board seemed to have, was to try to get some units that potentially would be equity purchasable by perhaps a person who is, wants to be in Sparta and wants to own or is downsizing and wants to buy a smaller unit. And so that was one of the bases for the incentive.
That's the spirit, but is there?
That's the spirit. But in the real world, like, we can't even regulate who rents what and.
All right. So after the fact, it is what it is.
So they may have to make a condo for those six units and sell condominium units, and then whoever buys them is free to do what they do in their unit, okay, within law.
Any other questions from the dais for this witness?
Not for now.
We're going to carry it to a date certain unless you want to, I don't, I think this witness has to come back.
Yes, and that's the thing. I normally would open the floor for questions for this witness, but the unfortunate circumstance is that this testimony isn't complete yet. So I think that at this point, it's prudent to carry.
So if the board is ready, we could carry it to a date certain, which I believe would be January 17, 2024. Does that work for the applicant? I think you mentioned it before, Brian. January 17.
That'll be fine.
This application plus holdings will be carried without additional notices to January 17, 2024 at 7:00 PM.
General question, which is in specific.
We can do that during the open portion.
Well, no, it sounds like it's about this case.
It's about this case?
It sounds like it.
I'm sorry, he said, he had said a general question. So is it relative to this particular hearing? A couple of hearings or the specific one?
If anything, it's about this case. If it's going to be about this case, it has to be in the hearing.
Okay.
Up to the chair if you want to allow anything about this case.
Go ahead.
So Mike, please raise your right hand. Do you swear a firm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Please state your name and address.
Mike Devine Oak Parkway. You could file this under the forest and the trees, frankly. I feel oftentimes we don't do enough forest thinking. We talk, this is a preliminary hearing, we're already deep into trees about patios and everything else. And I don't know that we, I know that municipal land use law, and Tom can correct me, says a developer is entitled to highest and best use of his land. Okay? No dispute. I often do talk about what, to what extent the township has rights. And I know zoning and all those things, permitted use, et cetera, is supposed to cover that. But if you asked probably everybody in town, does it make sense to put a four-story apartment house in a high-traffic zone, a high-congested zone? Does that make sense in a flagpole lot? On the face of it, I would suggest it doesn't. You might be able to maneuver within zoning and everything else to convince yourself it can, especially if you accommodate terraces and all this other stuff. But is it ever possible the town can say, hey, we love an apartment building. We just don't want it there. And we're not going to shoehorn it into a place that's inappropriate. What are the demographic implications? What are the traffic implications? I mean, all kinds of possibilities that aren't necessarily explicit in zoning or whatever. So my question, I guess, is broadly, the last, the last application, I can't talk about that directly, but I had the feeling we're shoehorning a very desirable use into a place that's not appropriate for it. What comes first, the location or the use? And to what extent can the town say, hey, great, you have a right to develop it, but we are overriding considerations. I'd say go somewhere else for it. So just, just an observation.
You.
Hi, I'm Vivian Perlmutter, and I've been sworn in already.
Vivian, you have to be sworn in.
You have to be sworn in again.
Yes, this is a separate hearing now, so please raise your right hand.
It's up.
Do you swear a firm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do. First of all, no one mentioned in this an elevator laundry room, whether the individual renter can adjust the temperature in their individual apartment.
Those are good questions for the witness. Mr. Dottoli, please answer those questions.
Every unit has its own laundry room. Every unit has its own heating and air conditioning system, so they can control their temperature. And the third question?
Elevator.
It is an elevator building.
One or two.
And all, one elevator, and all units are handicap accessible.
Okay. And my major problem is I still want a traffic study done on Sparta Avenue before this is accepted. I want a, our traffic engineer to look at the exit and entrance plans here. I'm very, very concerned about them sharing an entrance with Burger King. I find it very inappropriate, and I am a senior who could possibly rent one of those apartments, and I wouldn't want to drive into Burger King in order to get to my apartment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jenny Derrick, Stappen to Sparta. Could you clarify, it was stated at the beginning that there was some type of a letter from Captiva, the previous developer, that was associated with this project that got the initial preliminary approval. What is the relationship and what was that letter discussing? Or is that something I have to Oprah?
No, you can have it. That is a letter. It's in the, I believe.
I didn't see it. Is it in there?
Dory put it, she just put it on the website yesterday, I think, or maybe today.
Yeah, it was received very recently.
It's basically a letter from the attorney for the property owner requesting a one-year extension of the statutory protection period for the prior Captiva apartment, multifamily building approval and its statutory protection against changes in the ordinance. And the discussion we had earlier was, we're going to put that in abeyance and keep it as part of this application, and the board will decide whether to grant that extension after the board hears this case.
Okay. I'm sorry, I just need to clarify, I'm just trying to get an understanding what that means. Does that mean that you're looking at this application as a new application?
Yes, the board is, this, not only are we looking at it, the applicant has filed this as a new application.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that clarification.
You're welcome. Jen, you didn't get sworn in.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear a firm to tell the truth and that the statements you've given are the truth to help you, God?
I do.
We know, well, spell your last name, please, for the record.
D E R I C K S.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Simmons' letter in the applicant, in all the files that were posted relating to this application noted nine items that were insufficient or not complete or not, haven't not, haven't yet been filed. Has that been, have they been satisfied?
Most of the items that, most of the items that I listed were really not applicable here for this application from the standpoint, they talk about wells, with the primary reason being if an applicant was going to get their water supply from an individual well, that would affect other wells in the area. And in this particular case, this property is served by the Sparta Water Department and also sanitary sewer. That's why I put those weren't applicable. And the items that I indicated should be provided were the certification from the tax collector that the taxes have been paid.
I saw that that was there, yes.
And the municipal clerk, and also any deed restrictions or protective covenants. The applicant's attorney advised me that the taxes have been paid, and prior to the start of the hearing tonight, he indicated that he was going to send me a copy of the title report, which would have all the various easements that are on file affecting the subject property.
I appreciate that. Thank you. I did see that Dory attached the bill, the tax bill, rather, as having been satisfied. Thank you. To Vivian's point, there was a traffic study done in 2017, and the note from the applicant's traffic expert in the initial hearing was that because of COVID, there were extraordinary circumstances that wouldn't allow for a traffic study at that point. I did have a question that may have to hold until we do hear from, if there is going to be a traffic expert, but what is the opportunity or what means are being made to prevent leakage, for lack of a better word, of people who live in this building to go behind the other buildings and use their exits, use their parking lots? In other words, cut through. Is there a barrier? Are there going to be barriers? Is there, or is it somehow going to be limited? I didn't see it in the design, so that's why I'm asking. Is it going to be limited? This is the only driveway.
Jen, this witness is the architect.
Right, that's what I thought. Maybe it would be.
You're beyond the scope of, I believe they're hoping or planning for their engineer to testify at the next meeting, and he would be the appropriate witness for the.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy Ebbencousen, Scudders Road.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear a firm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Please go ahead. Oh, please spell your last name.
E B B I N K H U Y S E N. Do we know how close the adjacent buildings are to this proposed building? That might be an engineering question, but I just figured I'd write out there.
Mr. Dottoli might know the answer to that.
I'm going to defer that to our engineer.
Okay. Will there be clothing or other items allowed to be hanging on the balconies that you referenced? And is there any ordinance that would prevent that?
I'm going to defer that to the building operator management.
Maybe they could have an answer for that at the next meeting.
Okay, can I, do we know of any ordinance that would prevent that?
I don't believe there's an ordinance that regulates people's hanging clothes on their balconies. But I'm not 100% sure, but I'm.
That might be an HOA thing. Yeah.
Yeah, it's usually the property owner.
That's definitely an HOA thing.
Well, it could be an HOA thing, I understand, but also I would think it would be an ordinance potentially to be considered for our town and the town center.
It could potentially, Kathy, but I don't, all you asked was, is there one? And I don't think there is.
Yeah, I got you. I just wanted to refute that. What I'm, I'm hearing a lot about ingress and egress. Is there a dedicated way to enter and exit this property? Or is there an easement? Can we clarify that, please?
Again, that will be in the engineer's testimony. And the answer is yes, there is a dedicated way.
There is a dedicated way that's not shared with any adjacent property?
There is an easement with an adjacent property that has an exit driveway.
Okay. Is there a green space planned for this property?
The engineer will testify, but yes, there is a lot of green space.
How about for animals? Are animals allowed in these rentals?
That will be up to the operations.
Well, the reason I ask about the green space and animals is, as we know, dogs need to go for walks. So has that been considered in this building?
That will be discussed by the operator.
Okay. What am I, oh for five? I guess, I guess that's all I have. Yep, that'll be it then. Thank you.
Was there an environment, updated environmental site assessment or any environmental work done?
Yes, there was. We provided an environmental impact statement. Yes, that was submitted. It's part of the application. I believe Mr. Simmons has reviewed it.
Adrian Beerman, 12, Brook Drive.
Adrian, please raise your right hand. Do you swear a firm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Adrian, I'm sorry, but please spell your last name.
That's M E E R M A N.
Go ahead.
I have a question. You mentioned that there are AC units for each apartment on the roof. What kind of heating in the winter time do you have? It's forced air. Forced air. Is that electric? We haven't determined that yet. Okay. The, and the AC units obviously are electric. That is fair. How does the power reach this complex? Does it go underground or does it go on top of the poles? I'm going to defer that to the engineer. But in your design, that is not, that's not part of your design? Well, it's part of our team's design, and that's the engineer's aspect. Okay, so that's at the next hearing. Okay. You mentioned that the AC units are super quiet. Is that for each individual unit? Or if we have in the summertime, four units going 24/7, what will the sound, the sound effect be then, four units in concert? The sound will, again, comply with the township's ordinance. The amount of sound permitted will be complied with. Okay, and Mr. Simmons, that is something that has been discussed, what the sound effect will be of 40 AC units?
That question on the sound level was brought up in our report, and tonight was the first night, obviously, with any discussion from the applicant's architect. He indicated the type of units that they're providing, and additional information, I'm sure, will be provided on those units so we can look at the manufacturer's specifications. Not that I'm doubting the architect, but to verify what he's indicating and compare it to the DEP and the Sparta Township Sound Limit Standards.
Okay, and then in that, in the specs, in the manufacturer specs, it will then also indicate a certain length of time where they guarantee the low hum. And I have to say 10 years, there's no more warranty of that. So I just want to point out that 40 AC units at night, you're going to hear, you're going to hear them in the end. I have one last question of the architect before. Before you designed this apartment complex, had you visited Sparta before? You're familiar with the town? How would you sum up, say, the overall vibe of Sparta, if you could do that in one word or one phrase?
I don't think this person is competent to testify as to a vibe.
Okay, so what is your impression as an architect of how this town is architecturally holding together? I think it's rather eclectic. Sure, and eclectic in random or eclectic in being a town character? I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question. Well, if you say the word, if you use the word eclectic, is that a random kind of eclecticism? Or would you say that the town has a certain atmosphere, eclectic, that holds it together? No, I don't think it has an atmosphere that holds it together. I think it's quite diverse. Okay. When you designed this apartment complex, was that with the eclecticism of Sparta in mind? Or could this be a complex that would also feel at home in points further east along Route 4? There's a lot of this kind of construction going up. Would you say that this differentiates from that kind of construction? Or is this, by and large, the same style that we have been using for the past 15, 20 years? 15, 20 years we are here? Yeah, throughout the nation. I mean, this particular construction style has been used. Your questions are very nebulous. I can't answer your questions. I'm sorry. I don't, I don't understand your point here. What it has to do with my testimony with regard to this building, I don't understand. If you are the architect, then, then you must have had a certain notion of what you wanted to build, correct? Correct, there it stands. And that sense, so I would like to know, is this a building that you think is uniquely suited for Sparta? Or could this be a building that might be designed and built anywhere else? It could be designed and built anywhere else, as well as Sparta. So, so nothing specific to Sparta? I mean, it can't just be placed anywhere? Yes. Okay, all right. So that is something that I would say ties in with a bit of the testament, with the comment from the town lawyer, that given the design standards of Sparta, that this building is very far off from that. I don't think he said it was very far off from that. I think he said we were very close, but it needs some work. Oh, that's... I think that's what he said, I don't want to... Well, maybe there was an echo in the room.
I think we're going to, we're going to get a lot more information once we see a color rendering of what the actual structure is intended to look like.
Gray and dark, right, gray, a gray and dark brown.
Well, we can discuss it at the point that we actually see a rendering, where then we can kind of take a deeper dive in terms of aesthetics, which I believe is where you were going with that.
Aesthetics and suitability, yes, yeah, all right. Okay, thank you for your answers.
I found my last question, if you'll permit me.
Sure.
Thank you. Kathy Ebbinkowsen, Scudders Road. I understand that there's another site approval or site plan approval for this site previous that was being discussed. If this is to be approved, does it supersede that one? Or are we having two different approvals for the same site? How does that work?
Is it possible to have two separate approvals? Yes, but in this instance, this...
Can you use the microphone? I'm sorry.
This approval would supersede the prior approval. And that's something Mr. Collins touched on earlier about you may not have to act on that extension.
And that would be withdrawn, the approval?
I have no authority to withdraw it, but the board can certainly...
It just wouldn't be extended. See, right now, it's at, it's at the end of its tenure. So the letter was requesting an extension for a year, but it would be a moot point if we go through this hearing and this particular application is approved.
If I may, though, because that goes to my original comment as well. If there's an approval and there's an extension pending or a request for an extension, but now this is a new application, is the current property owner who signed off on both applications waiting to see the decisions made here as a fallback to the other approval? Or?
We don't know.
The future of the two or the best of the two?
Does one have bearing on the other, right?
You know, I just want to understand that concept.
Right, I think that's, that's a question for the applicant's attorney.
We are not the prior owner, we are a contract purchaser. So the expectation would be if this application is approved, the prior owner has no intention of proceeding on that.
But as a contract purchaser, would you not have spoken to that in your, in your PSA agreements? And, and will that run with the current owner?
We spoke to this application, not the prior applications.
But as a contract purchaser, just, just work with me here, just so I understand. There's an approval already. When you're a contract purchaser, you're willing to proceed and go ahead through all that, knowing that the other approval can still, or your agreement protects that if you proceed, that that shuts that other, that previous approval out?
I guess to phrase it this way is, this applicant is not interested in that prior approval.
Why don't you keep going? I don't think you're going to be, the way I described it before in the beginning of the meeting is the best way to look at it. I'm going to keep it that simple.
So my question is to the board and it's procedural, why not to the applicant? Legally, if you have one approval and you're extending it, are you able to have a second approval for the same site at the same time? Or does one...
There's no clear answer to that, Kathy. The board will be determining whether to grant an extension of that other approval, and it may not grant an extension.
It hasn't been extended. Right, the letter came in yesterday, I think, so it's, there has been no decision or agreement to extend it.
Right.
I understand that, and if it were to be extended, I'm saying hypothetically, can we have two approvals on the same site?
Hypothetically, but we're not talking, we're not acting like that's going to happen here, so.
We're assuming it's not?
I didn't say that. I said it's going to be decided at the end of the case, so.
We're going to proceed with this application.
That's right, this applicant is entitled to proceed and is not asking for that approval and is not asking to extend that approval.
I understand that, that's why my question is to the board, to understand procedurally, would we have two approved applications at the same time? Could that occur?
Theoretically, it could occur.
And what legal ramifications does that have?
None.
If two parties have approval to build on the same site?
They're just, if it was the case, there would be two separate approvals. But this applicant is asking for a totally different application, that's why it's a new application, so. That's all, that's what's pending.
Tom, the timeframe zone conflict to go through this whole hearing?
Not at all, not at all. You have no, you have no deadline for acting on extensions of approvals, and if there isn't, that's why I said I recommend you wait till the end of the case.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So are we done with the public session?
I, we're done with the public portion of the hearing.
Are we carrying with...
We're carrying.
Just a question for next meeting, I guess for Mr. Chukaski. Are you bringing along the party that created the environmental impact statement?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And based upon tonight's questions and comments, it'd be good to have a traffic engineer explain the answers to the questions of those, those witnesses, those people who asked questions.
Right, so the takeaways would be that it would be helpful to have a color rendering, the traffic engineer speak to those issues, and be prepared for some of the engineering questions that have been asked this evening.
All right, we'll have a number of people from Burton Engineering appear.
Great.
So we're carrying the remainder of this hearing on plus holdings to January 17, 2024 at 7:00 PM. No additional notices required.
Perfect.
Thank you all, enjoy the holidays.
Thank you, you as well. So we're going to, at this stage, move on to other board business. As things, though, I had mentioned this earlier, Vice Chair Day is not with us. The ordinance for parking design standards is going to be held until January 17. Does anyone else on the board have any business they'd like to discuss before I move through some of my housekeeping items? No? Okay. Really quickly, the Master Plan Subcommittee has not scheduled its first meeting. However, the first meeting date is intended to be announced at our reorg meeting on January 17. Good night and thank you. Regarding the professional search update, the board will review and deliberate the data collected this evening. Contracts will be awarded at our reorganization meeting on January 17. Okay, that is everything that I had in terms of other board business. We can move on to the area that is open to the public for comments on matters that are not on the agenda.
Adrian Beerman, 12, Brook Drive. I have a question about the approval from a few months ago for Dykstra Associates for their medical building on 181, right at a corner with East Mountain Road. During the meeting where the approval was granted, there were a number of additional requirements memorialized, having to do with the landscaping, certain types of trees, and the location of those trees. And upon a quick examination of the site, the landscaping has gone in exactly according to the previous plan without any amendments. So all the extra discussion about, and the conclusions, the memorializations of additional plantings have not been executed. The site is just as, as here originally wanted to build it. So I would like to know if there's any mechanism whereby Dykstra can be made to conform to the conditions of his approval.
Right, to be, I didn't have any indication that it's complete.
Is this the one across from the Shell Station at East Mountain?
Correct, yes.
A couple of the trees they put in are actually dead.
Okay, dead trees.
So I mean, I don't think they're complete with their landscaping.
Well, what they planted were the small little mini shrubs and the mini tree-like objects in front of the parking lot. But there is no sign that any other planting has been either prepared or is underway.
Some down by the retention pond.
A retention pond, but also...
Those are the ones I'm talking about. A number of them died, but they were pretty healthy when they went in and they died.
The, right.
Mr. Beerman, I think you're talking about the, not Mr. Dykstra's proposal, but Delmar Woodport's proposal, and it is still under construction. The board doesn't do site inspections of implementation of people's site plans, and the board doesn't get involved in that. Actually, they shouldn't get involved in that. The planning department and the board engineer do get involved. Maybe Dave can help us, but I don't think that site is finished yet, so.
I think that the site that they're referring to is a work in progress, if you will. And one of the things that you'll notice in the reports that we do over the years, we request an ASBIL plan of the facility. And normally, what'll happen when that ASBIL plan is submitted, we'll take that and compare it to the resolution conditions, the reports from our office, from other agencies in the township, and we'll do a site inspection. And you bring up a good point, if they have not provided all the landscaping materials that were conditions of the approval, we'll call that out in the report back to the planning department. But it's still in progress, if you will.
Okay, and then is there a mechanism to enforce the conditions?
That's what he just described, but the board is not involved in that.
Correct. Mr. Simmons described the process. I'm looking at the enforcement mechanism. For example, is there a performance bond that is not released until the conditions are met?
Basically, what'll happen, the applicant will talk to the construction department, the planning department, and they'll be looking for a final C, certificate of occupancy, for the building that they're constructing. And normally, that department contacts our office and other agencies involved and determines if everything's satisfied or not. And they usually don't issue the final CO until those conditions are complied with.
Okay, and landscaping is part of that?
Yes.
All right, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else for matters not on the agenda? Okay. So we will be moving into an executive session to discuss attorney-client privileged matters and personal contract negotiations. No action will be taken on matters discussed in closed session, and we'll be moving to adjourn upon our return. So Tom, if you wouldn't mind to craft a motion to enter into closed session?
You have before you a resolution of the planning board of the township of Sparta authorizing a closed session or executive session pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act to discuss matters just as you described, pending litigation, two litigations, attorney-client privilege communication and personnel contract negotiations, the matters to be revealed to the public upon completion of all litigation and appeals and the removal of the need for confidentiality. Is there such a motion by any party?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Ms. Dean Blamedy?
Yes.
Jeanette Burke?
Yes.
Christine Dunbar?
Yes.
Phil Enright?
Yes.
Justin Canales?
Yes.
Angela Cassie?
Yes.
Chairwoman Celeste Luciano?
Yes.
Ernest Ragset?
Yes.
Mike Sylvester?
Yes.
Angela, that was your last motion.
Angela, that was your last motion.
Motion to come out of close, yay.
Go ahead.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to come out of closed session.
Motion to come out of closed session.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Now you can adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, everyone, thank you so very much. This year has been amazing. I'm looking forward to next year.